So the City of San Juan Batista, regular city council meeting of April 21st, 2020 is now in session. Stand for the flag salute vice mayor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mayor Edge?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Here.
Councilmember De Vries? Councilmember Flores?
He's here.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
So councilmember De Vries?
Here.
Councilmember Flores?
Oh my gosh.
She's here.
Councilmember Freeman?
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. Now we go on to public comment. Any public comment of something that is not on the agenda? Do we have public comment?
Oh my gosh.
Raise your hand? Is there any participants?
We don't have any public.
Okay. If there is no further, no one else with public comment will go on to the consent items. All matters listed under the consent agenda may be enacted by one motion authorizing actions indicated for those items so designated. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless requested by a member of the city council, a staff member, or a citizen. So is everybody okay with the consent items?
Did you want to talk about Hazel Hopkins, item E?
Item E regarding our clinic here in San Juan Batista. It had been closed, we found out that it had been closed, I think it was April 8th. And we started a petition in just a few, a day, I think, or less. They have agreed to open the clinic for two days a week with limited hours. And that will start on April 27th, that's next Monday. And then on May 1st, I believe, or May 3rd, they will resume regular hours. And the reason they had closed it was because they were, they were short-staffed. They didn't have doctors to staff the clinic.
So mayor, does anybody else want anything else to vote on the consent?
Is everybody okay with the consent items?
Yep.
I'm okay with it.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent items.
I'll second it.
I just have one question. So we will not send the letter to Hazel Hopkins because it's not even being read?
Right.
Okay, thank you, that's all I need.
Sorry.
So if I understand correctly, the motion is going to be to approve all the items under item three consent items except for...
Except for sending the letter.
Is that correct? Except for item three E?
Three E, yes.
Three E.
Does the council have any comments on that?
If not, okay, so then it was, the motion was made by councilman Jordan and seconded, I think, by councilman Freeman.
That's correct.
A roll call vote. Councilmember De Vries?
Yeah.
Councilmember Flores?
Can you hear us? I'm sorry.
He's got a thumbs up.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Edge?
Yes.
All members of the council being present, the motion as stated by the maker passes unanimously.
Thank you. Now we go on to presentations, informational items and reports. So proclamation for Water Awareness Month, May 2020. It says here that Sean is going to read it. Sean, are you going to read the proclamation?
Yes, I would like to.
Okay.
First, I want to preface, you know, the rain and snowfall this year below average were about 55% of our average snowfall and rainfall for the year.
Oh my.
So it's been on the dry side. The good news is, is the last two years are kind of dry, but not too dry, so we have, still have some soil moisture in our area here. Plus, we're able to take some imported water along with recycled water and we pretty much built up the groundwater basis since our last big drought. However, you know, next year, we don't know what's going to happen and we need to start acting now as we always do. We need to be as efficient with water. You saw people right at the start of this coronavirus thing going out importing water. Fortunately, our water supply is uninterrupted. There's no need to do that. I'm writing articles about that, that our water supply is uninterrupted, it's good quality, so we don't have to worry about it in the greater area here, so that's good. So without further ado, let me read the proclamation. Whereas California's arid and semi-arid climate, its ambitious and evolving economy, its continually growing population and climate change have combined to make shortages conflicting demands the norms. Whereas the health, welfare, and quality of life for our community depends on reliable, high-quality water supply. And whereas the state, counties, cities, and concerned citizens make strong efforts to foster wise decision concerning water issues and water use. And whereas California has enacted legislation to promote sustainable groundwater management practices. Whereas water softeners contribute significant amounts of salt to wastewater and degrade our water supply and result in wastewater quality that exceeds regulatory limits and hampers recycled water efforts. And whereas the fact that California will experience periodic droughts, whereas efficient use of water is critical not only during droughts, but all the time. Whereas May 2020, the City of San Juan Batista is inviting everyone to find out ways to save water both at work and at home. Now therefore, the City of San Juan Batista does proclaim May 2020 as Water Awareness Month. It can urge all citizens, businesses, industries, institutions, public agencies to review their water use and water systems, water use efficiency. And to contact the Water Resources Association of San Bernardino County for water-saving ideas and assistance.
Lovely. Thank you, Sean. We will mail this, we'll, we'll send the mail, the proclamation in the mail for you.
Yeah, I wanted to let you know, I'm still going into the office. We're not able to go out and help customers directly right now, but if people need water saving, they need some bills, they can email me or call me in my office. We're trying to do as much as we can to assist the community in the street guard.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Sean. Now we go on to the proclamation municipal clerks week, May 3rd through the 9th.
Someone to read that?
Sure.
Do you want to read it? Okay, go ahead.
It's up to you.
Sure, no, absolutely.
So the proclamation begins, 51st anniversary of municipal clerks week, May 3rd through 9th, 2020. Whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. And whereas the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the office of the municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. Whereas a municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. Whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk. I now, therefore I, Mary Edge, mayor of San Juan Batista, do recognize the week of May 3rd through May 9th, 2020 as municipal clerks week and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerks, Laura Cent and Trish Pates, and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Dated this 21st day of April, 2020.
Thank you, Laura. Okay. So then now we go on to the proclamation of National Public Works Week, and I will read that. Proclamation, National Public Works Week 2020. Whereas public works, infrastructure, facilities, and services are of valid importance to substantial communities and to the health, safety, and well-being of the people of this community. And whereas such facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees from the state and local governments and the private sector who are responsible for and must plan, design, build, operate, and maintain the transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems. Public buildings and other structures and facilities essential to serve our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leader, and children in California to gain, to gain knowledge of and maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas this year's, this year marks the 60th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore, the city council of the City of San Juan Batista does hereby proclaim the week of May 17th through the 23rd, 2020 as National Public Works Week and urges all residents to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they have made in our national health, safety, welfare, and quality of life. Sign, Mary Edge. So we will make sure that this gets forwarded.
Thank you, yeah, that's awesome, thank you.
All right, so now we go to item D, Bill Nicholson from LAFCO, executive officer. Are you there?
Hi, Bill, are you there? He was there.
He needs to unmute himself.
Okay. Okay. Let's see.
There we go.
Oh, there he goes, great.
Just had to find the mute. I think I'm ready to put the PowerPoint up if you're ready for me to start with that.
Okay.
So we'll see if this, also share screen?
So yeah, you should be able to share the screen. See the green button at the bottom?
Yeah, I got that, and so I'm picking.
There.
There you go.
Oh, great. Okay, so I'm gonna, I know several of you know about LAFCO already, and some of you may not know so much, so some of you may be bored, but I'm gonna kind of watch. LAFCO is in California and specifically with San Bernardino LAFCO. So LAFCO is an entity established by the state starting back in 1963, and all counties have LAFCO. And when the state legislature enacted the law creating LAFCOs, they had several main purposes which were to encourage orderly boundaries and discourage urban sprawl, to conserve agriculture and open space resources, and to promote efficient delivery of public services. It's not limited to just cities and urban services. It includes cemetery districts, hospital districts, agricultural irrigation districts, all special districts and cities, of course, municipality. It excludes school districts, however, they're not under LAFCO's purview. Over the years, they've added more purposes for LAFCO. And so they've added, that LAFCO is to fit our regional housing needs when looking at annexations for urban growth. Adequate water supplies, look at disadvantaged communities, especially disadvantaged unincorporated communities. So consider adding those into a city, for instance. And they've added other essential issues, most recently last year was because of the continuous wildfires and urban rural interface fire issues. They've added that as a special consideration. The who is LAFCO is important, and again, some of you that may not know LAFCO so well, there's a minimum standard for what, or the membership of the LAFCO in California. And San, but San Bernardino LAFCO consists of, there's two county supervisors who elected city council members or mayors. And one counts three categories, there's an alternate who can vote when the one of the regular members is not present. The LAFCO is implementing state law for efficient government services, protection of ag open spaces.
It's because he's on that.
It is not a body where the city reps are representing the cities or their city, and supervisors are represented county. When you get on LAFCO, you're supposed to be looking at the LAFCO law, which is the Cortez and Maxxertsberg Act, and removing your city or county cap. It's very hard to do, but that's, that's the makeup of the commission is to look at that, the law set up for LAFCOs and evaluate it in annexation or a boundary change based on the LAFCO code. So with that, the responsibilities of LAFCO including, or excluded to regulate boundaries of existing public agencies. So it's typically an annexation to enlarge the boundary, detachment to remove the boundary, or you might consolidate two special districts together and say you're merging boundaries. Or they create new boundaries, new agencies. And if it's a city, it's called incorporation. If it's a special district, it's called a formation. You can actually dissolve a disincorporated city, and that will all go through LAFCO. LAFCO also can regulate the extension of public services outside the boundaries of the agency. Maybe there's a reason to provide a service when you're not accessing the property. And that, that happens in limited cases for San Juan Batista. It happens all the time over Hollister. This is a different issue. But it's, it's, the LAFCO law is mainly about boundaries and services provision within your jurisdiction. And the provision about providing services outside your boundary is a small page and a half of a 200-page law, so that aspect is very limited. When you're changing the boundaries or repending boundaries, it has to be consistent with the sphere of influence, which is the service, the ultimate service area of the jurisdiction, and I'll talk about that in a moment. And also LAFCO with a lot of responsibilities, we do have, we were excluded specifically from regulating how land use is designated by a city or the county and how that is used. So for example, if the city of San Juan Batista saw a nice commercial property, wanted to annex it, LAFCO could say, well, that's better for housing, that should be in the apartment project, so we'll let you annex it for housing, but not commercial. The law prohibits LAFCO from evaluating a change in you, LAFCO can evaluate what is presented before them from the, from the application. They can approve or deny it, but they can't change land use. Additional responsibility, again, it's where we are to establish, the sphere of influence is defined as a plan for the probable physical boundary and service area of the agency. So it's typically larger than, for a city, it would be larger than your city limits. It's an area, it's your future service area that you would plan for, typically through your general plan or utility master plans. And for a ag irrigation district, maybe areas that are kind of hollow and the district gets more water, so you look at future areas that they might try to bring water to and cultivate. In addition to the LAFCO, that came into place in 2001 is a new provision, or newer provision for municipal service reviews, which helped inform the sphere of influence and have certain factors that LAFCO has to evaluate. And so we update spheres of influence, and the state wants us to do that every five years or so, depending on the need. We have to do municipal service review first, and those factors include the growth of population, projection of an agency, needs and deficiencies of public services, the financial ability of the agency to provide those services, any opportunities or existing shared facilities, or existing shared facilities, and how it is productive. And then also accountability and operational efficiencies, such as due to the jurisdiction, especially special districts. Do they have websites? Are they posting their agendas, probably following the Brown Act, and generally being transparent? I don't know if someone was trying to ask a question or chime in, was that you, Don?
No, not from this side.
Not from this side, here.
Okay, just because I have a lot of texts there, I just wanted to give a brief relationship of your current general plan, 2015. This diagram comes out of it. It has your city limits in blue, and that's, that's your jurisdiction, LAFCO, and has no authority for changing anything within your current city limits, although if we do a sphere of influence update or municipal service review,
I think we covered it.
It'll be your total operations.
It runs across one whole.
Your ability to serve badly, efficiently, to this, we don't just deal with growth. Your next boundary, though, where you would be typically going is your sphere of influence. And in your general plan, you've identified the area in red as your, your planned service area. It can see most business to the south and west. And then in your general plan, you also identified an area of concern, which would not be a LAFCO-related boundary. It's a good idea to have. LAFCO wouldn't have anything to do with it that you might be concerned about. Things that go on with the county in that area to protect it for the city, or it could be having to do with some of the amenities, like a regional park that you don't want to annex, but you have interest in preserving or maintaining. Then I'll, again, I'll talk about maps a little bit more in a moment. So a little bit more about the function of LAFCOs. LAFCOs are independent. There's one for each of the 58 counties in California. We, there's no appeal from a LAFCO decision. We're not like, your planning commission, it could be appealed up to the city council. LAFCO's, there's no, there is no body over LAFCO such as the county. It, it would actually go to court if somebody didn't like what LAFCO did. At first, LAFCO could reconsider it, but if they decided the same thing, then somebody would have to sue LAFCO if they didn't like it. The state's put LAFCO in the role of a legislator's watchdog, and so they look at LAFCO, they've added other priorities for LAFCO. And so they look at LAPCO, they've added other priorities for LAPCO over the years. As I mentioned, one was these disadvantaged communities. You see, there's underserved areas, and maybe when a city grows, they always go to open space land to see if it's developed. But there's an older, unincorporated area that's lacking out of the water, maybe they're unfeeling subject systems. And so over the years, they just get left behind as the cities grow. And so they put to LAPCO that LAPCO should be looking into that, encouraging those areas to be brought in with an annexation of adjacent land for development. And then also looking at efficiencies, and again, for special districts, are they transparent? Are they doing things behind closed doors and making decisions publicly? And in my whole perspective, officer, again, I'm solely accountable to the commission. I'm not working for the county supervisors or some other body. It's the commissioners, and they rotate. Right now, you've got State or Florida is on LAPCO from San Juan. And Hollister's got two reps. Formerly, you had one regular rep and an alternate. So now Hollister's, that's those are the people that I answer to. So let's go back and look at the general plan and sphere of influence boundaries. And at first, I wanted to just give a regional context, because LAPCO, not only do we deal with San Juan Batista and Hollister, but we also deal with special districts like Arores Water District, this county-wise, San Juan County Water District. But this is kind of the lay of the land in the county's general plan, with most of the urban development planned around Hollister. The Hollister's in white. The white area is the city limits, and the orange is some of the growth area that's identified by the county, which is significant, because you can see the white goes right out. So where the city limits, again, the county has got ideas for urban development. And of course, we looked at the city's general plan, which I have a slide of. They have plans for urban development, too. Over in San Juan Batista, you can see the designations around the city are pretty much green, which is agriculture. So at this point, the city's general plan is not encouraging development around the city. For the county to develop around the city, if they had sewer and water, and they didn't need to create a new special district or even a county service area, which is a county mechanism for providing some services, then it wouldn't even come to LAPCO. So the city, excuse me, for the county, they could do, they have done a lot of like one to five acre lot developments out in rural areas. And they just keep that on their own. It doesn't come to LAPCO. But cities aren't fortunate. If you're adding land to your city for development, if it's not in your city already, you gotta come to LAPCO to get authority to do it. So I'll go on to, again, to this slide again, just showing you the relationship of the city limits to the proposed sphere and this area of interest. And I say proposed sphere, because the actual sphere of influence for the city is this green boundary that's more of a rectangle that goes much further out. Not on the south side as much, but on the east side, the northeast, it gets into this area that this is, the background is a soils map showing basically the prime land and putting old grazing land. The colors are red and purple and yellow. Those are all your urban leg designations, basically where the city's planning to grow. So this, this sphere boundary, under the definition that I presented earlier, is your planned service area. And so you can see that the area that you intend to serve in your general plan is these brightly colored areas, the industrial, the commercial, the residential. It's not the ag area that you would plan to serve. So we have a sphere of influences out of date for your general plan. And again, it may not be common knowledge, but LAPCO is the agency who approves a sphere or modifies a sphere. The city can propose a boundary, but they don't adopt it themselves. So that it's, we talked about it at LAPCO, it's either the LAPCO initiates a sphere when they want to or they need to. Again, we have a five-year cycle that the state tries us to look at. We don't have to do it on five years, but they encourage us to. Or usually, a city would adopt a new general plan and submit their sphere to LAPCO to protect that general plan. And that did not happen in San Juan Batista's case. So it's an issue that's ripe for discussion, and I know the city's talking about that. Assuming this is a sphere, or the sphere on this map, this red boundary is the one that you would choose. Just for reference, again, here's the general plan of the city Hollister. And the gray area is the city limits. So again, on their general plan, they have a lot of the yellow areas that are housing. And they got some purple and blue that are either industrial or business park, or the red's commercial. So they have areas planned for growth that are not in the city limits, just like you do. But as I showed you earlier, in the county's general plan, in this entire boundary here, the county also has designations that are more urban, whereas in San Juan Batista, it's agricultural. And in the state's planning guidelines, this is from the Office of Planning and Research, which is setting up for how you do general plans and information about boundaries. This is kind of the typical boundary where you have a city limit in the gray. And then the first boundary outside of that is this dash line, which is the sphere of influence. And then the outer boundary could be the city's planning area or area of concern. And so this looks very much like your general plan map. If I go back to it, where you have your city limits, and then the red would be your proposed sphere. Then you have this area of concern, which is very much like the planning area in this model from the state. So kudos to the city for following that. Hollisters, their sphere of influence is actually very tight. And if you can see this arrow, in this area, for instance, this is Buena Vista Road. The sphere of influence is right here, and they have urban designations all around, way out of this area. But again, just like your city, they did not come to LAPCO after they adopted their general plan and asked for the sphere that we moved. There was a few cases where they've had to apply for a sphere amendment along with an annexation when they wanted to grow. And including the Highway 25 bypass that comes in around here. This area was not inside their sphere of influence, so they had to recently amend that coming through LAPCO with a parallel annexation. So you're doing a much better job, although your current general plan proposed sphere is not much reflected by LAPCO. So I had some other maps from various presentations that, I don't even get into that unless there's other discussion later. I just wanted to tell you about this outside agency service extension, because there is, at least one proposal's unaware of. And that's where LAPCO, it does have to approve this. But it's what is inside your sphere of influence, you could extend services under certain circumstances for new growth or new development, where the, you get an agreement with landlord to give up their right to protest a future annexation. So in the law, it's really that you're anticipating a future boundary change, such as an annexation, but you're serving it in advance. And that happens maybe where there's a logical place to develop, and the county would be processing it, but the city's willing to provide sewer or water to it, but it's not contiguous to the city. It's not touching the city. So you couldn't annex it without including other land. And the LAPCO can approve that with an understanding that the city's intending to annex it in the future. But it has to be, to annex it, it has to be within your sphere of influence. If the area's outside your sphere of influence, then the only time you would, LAPCO is supposed to approve and extension services is where you have an existing documented threat to public health and safety. And that's typically a failed well, or the subject system failing, or is contaminated. Then the city has excess capacity nearby, then, or excess capacity in a trunk line nearby, then you could, LAPCO could approve serving that. So it's kind of an emergency. So LAPCO is not supposed to approve a urban development, let's say for sewer and water, outside your sphere. So if the county came along and said, well, we see this property looks right for development, but it's not in the city's sphere, so we can develop it, but we don't have the sewers, so we want the city to provide it. And the city agreed for some reason that LAPCO was supposed to say no, because it's not in your sphere. And the sphere, again, is your service area. So if you're intending to serve it, you should put it in your sphere. And that being one solution is to move your sphere to accommodate that. But that seems very rarely in your case, so we don't, I think we need to get into that any further. I provided a brief summary here in a couple of slides of the annexation process, just because, I know you've done several annexations in the last, say, three years, but you typically haven't done a lot of them. So they outline their stuff of approval of a tentative map, like a subdivision map or a conditional use permit with some other project. You don't have to approve that first, but it helps, because one of the main things is, the third bullet is a CEQA document. You know, having that environmental review. LAPCO is rarely the body that would do environmental review. The city or the county or the special district would normally do it for the project. And LAPCO would rely on that document for our action on the boundary change. So it's good if you have a tentative map and you need to annex it, that you analyze the development, the service needs, if there's ag land inversion or habitat involved, you address all of that. And then when you submit the annexation to LAPCO, you've already got all the CEQA issues wrapped up. Also, if one annexed land that's not in the city, you have to prezone it. So whereas your general plan, designations can expand outside your city, your zoning is like a legal police power that only, you can only implement in your city limits. So the zoning, when it's outside your boundary, is called prezoning. What is gonna be zoned when or if the annexation takes place? And that's required by the state, that you gotta tell everybody whether you're gonna zone it. You can't annex ag land and say, we want to do something later, but we don't know what, so we'll just annex it and not give it any specific zoning. You have to say what it's gonna be bringing in to the city. And then the city can initiate the annexation by adopting a resolution of application. And that's would be how you initiate it. However, sometimes LAPCO could also get a petition of landowners signing, the petition or actually registered voters, tells us that they want to come into a city. But if that happened, we don't process it without the city's agreement. So even though the city did initiate it, we would reach out to the city and say, we got this petition. These five landowners want to come into the city. Well, what do you think? If the city says, hey, we don't have any capacity right now, or we're working on a general plan update, we're not ready, then we cannot process the annexation. So the city has to be willing to entertain it before we would do that. Another requirement that's a bigger deal for cities than in special districts, but when a city accesses land, the property tax, the local portion that would go to the county, now would need to get shared between the city and the county. And when it's annexed and LAPCO records the annexation, it goes up to the state board of equalization, and they have to split the taxes, and they don't know how to split them. So they made the law, the state made the law, that the local county and city have to decide what that tax sharing is gonna be. And therefore, they don't want you processing an annexation unless you have that agreement. And they don't want it filed with the state, and the state has to figure out, well, we don't know what to do with this share of county taxes. Do we give the city anything or how much? And so that's mandated, and right now, the city does have a sharing agreement with the county. Over in Hollister, they just, their agreement expired on January 1st. They just negotiated a new agreement with the county for residential development. They haven't done one for a commercial industrial yet. But that's just another caveat. It's part of the mix. So once you submit the application, then we have to notify the various agencies. A lot of agencies within the county, like the auditor and the assessor, that have to do with taxes and accounting. And also, that's why, school districts, or notify school districts, even though we don't have any authority over them, but they get to comment on annexation projects. Then again, we rely on the city's CEQA documentation for the most part. Rare exceptions, we might do our own, but normally we rely on the city's document. And then we hold a notice of public hearing. We have a 21-day notice, where the city's always have a 10-day notice, but LAPCO's are 21 days. And then when LAPCO takes action, say they approve it, there is actually a case where if the city initiated the proposal, annexing 20 parcels, if the landlords didn't sign, or the landlords or registered voters did not sign a petition saying they wanted to come in or they expressed any concerns, we actually have to hold a protest hearing. And the landlords or registered voters actually get to vote whether they want to come into the city or not. And even if the city wanted it, and the city council voted for it, and LAPCO approved it, the landlords or registered voters could kill it on a vote. So it's not, it's not anything like you normally do where you approve a project or a subdivision or even a zone change, where you hear, say, in the LAPCO world, the landlords actually can stop it if they, if the majority of them want to. When I, this slide says inhabited, and what inhabited means is not that there's just somebody living there. There actually has to be 12 registered voters to be considered inhabited. And if there are 12 or more, then the registered voters can vote. So if you're bringing in an area with old, for example, there's an old farming homes out in a rural area, and the farm landlord wants to sell to a developer. If those farm people or the residents are registered to vote, they actually, if there's 12 or more, they actually vote as renters, that they like it or they don't like it. And the landlord, if he doesn't live there, he doesn't get a vote as registered voters. But if you're voting by landowners, then you vote on the value of your land. You assess the value of the land. And then, of course, the vendors don't get a say in that. So that's a very critical evaluation when you're looking at an annexation. If it has a lot of existing residents in it, finding out if they're registered to vote or not, get more than 12, then it's very sure that you want to really work on getting the public's support for it, or else you could spend a lot of time and energy for not. And then the annexation, say there's no protest, and everything was approved, then the actual date when the land goes into the city limits is on the date we record that with the county reporter's office. And then again, we file a state board of equalization, and they will then, in the years going forward, they will distribute the taxes differently. Now, that's being said, typically, the taxes that they're negotiating or that they're splitting is the incremental increase in the value, and the base value stays with the county. So the ag value, let's say it was ag land, let's say of the county, and then the new development, you'll split the tax increment from that with whatever the arrangement is between the city and the county. And that completes my presentation. So I'm available for questions or comments.
Any questions from anybody?
We start with the council, right?
Yeah. So Councilman Freeman, do you have any questions?
No, I don't. I'd just like to thank you for a really great presentation. I'm sure it was of great interest to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman DeRiz, do you have a question, comment?
Yes, I have one. Yes, I have one question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hey, Bill, thank you for that great overview. I think you could teach that at the university. Should I have? Yeah, I know, but work too much with you. One question I have, though, is as regards the planning area. Am I correct in my understanding of a planning area that doesn't have much significance as regards LAPCO or many of the others you addressed, but is primarily a designation of the area of land to which the designation of lead agency will be applied? In other words, the county, even though a project may be county ground, county jurisdiction, if the proposed project is within San Juan Batista's planning area, then the county would defer to San Juan Batista for the administration of the application for that project?
No, not necessarily. The planning area, you would define what that is in your general plan, what you intend for it. The cooperation with the county is really something that you would negotiate. My experience is the best time to negotiate that is with the revenue tax sharing agreement with the county. When you're talking about property taxes, you know, I'm sure the city would want to keep all of the property taxes once you annex it. Say you're providing all the services in the county, and they say, well, we still provide some, so we should keep it. So you negotiate, well, how much is each entity gonna get? And so a lot of times, negotiation includes that, okay, we are willing to share more of the property tax with you, county, if you basically stay out of our backyard. We will grow over time. This is our current general plan. It goes out 15, 20 years. And later, city councils will adopt a new. And later, city councils will adopt a new general plan and go out further. And we don't want to have the county coming out and creating all this rural or urban development surrounding us and blocking us in. So you, it doesn't have to be through the revenue sharing process, but that's a typical way you do it because you're talking about, that process is about transferring land from the county into the city. So agreeing on a boundary, even if you lose your current outer area of interest boundary or area of concern, that could be recognized in an agreement with the county that they don't come in this area with urban proposals. It's fine to keep farming, but we...
Well, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
That's a really good idea to get them to agree in advance that they'll stay out of San Juan's planning area.
Yeah, and their general plan...
Their tax sharing plan. I'm sorry, what was that?
I was going to say, the good thing is their general plan is set up for that right now. They would be having to change their general plan and go through CEQA to start putting urban designations out there. So now is a good time to talk about it with them.
If the county will have to change their general plan, yeah, that's right. That's right, okay. Great, thank you, Bill. That's the only question I have, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. That was the question I had. Right. Councilman Flores, do you have any questions or comments?
No questions or comments?
Okay, thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I heard you. Thank you. Vice Mayor Jordan?
No, no questions. Do we get a copy of that?
We have one.
Okay. Because I'd like a copy.
I'd like to see that.
Yeah, I can provide a hard copy to everyone.
Thank you.
I have a question, if you don't mind. Thank you very much, Bill. We've discussed the status of our revenue sharing agreement. Right now is fairly weak. We want to negotiate a new one sooner than later and get a better share of that property tax, right?
Bill, are...
If I was in your shoes, I would say, right. Lafco's kind of neutral on that, but...
Okay, sorry. Okay.
Okay.
And Bill, are you able to stay for our urban growth boundary conversation?
Yes, I will stay in the meeting.
That would be great. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any public comment or questions?
Bill, I need you to stop sharing your screen.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Just click on the green button again, the share screen and...
Okay. Stop share, there we go.
Thank you. There is everybody, okay.
Thank you very much, Bill. Thank you. So now we go on to...
So no members of the public, Mayor? I was trying to...
I didn't hear anybody.
Okay, so we're cool. All right.
Go on. Okay, so now we go on to item 4E.
If I have a comment.
Okay, all right. Who is this?
I was muted, but I'll go back. But I just wanted to be sure you received my letter.
Who is it? Who is speaking, please?
Emily.
Hello?
Emily Renzel.
Oh, you...
Oh, Emily Renzel, okay.
Emily, your letter was pertaining to the urban growth boundary, correct?
Right, so that's later on, Emily.
And the spare influence. And I won't read the whole letter to you since you have received it. I support the work of Lafco and the intention of Lafco. I'm not sure that it's always implemented as well as it might be. But within our general plan, in the staff report, there was reference to policy PH1 dot two dot three. And I think there is a confliction within that policy that needs to be investigated as part of your work on dealing with the urban growth boundary and spare influence. And that's all I have to say, and I'm going to mute.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I think that's David Mack's report, and he'll do his presentation on 6B. And we'll take care of that.
So we'll take care of that later on. So now, any other comments? Okay, so if not, we'll go on to 4E, monthly financial statements.
So, thank you, Mayor. The monthly financial statements are provided in the council's packet tonight. They are pretty much status quo for the time being. In that, I'll say that we do have an exceptionally high percentage expense related to the Affordable Housing Fund. And we do have a substantial amount of reserves in that fund. That's related to all the different ordinances that were changed when we reviewed the housing element. So that definitely went over budget and justifiably so. I think we adopted seven different ordinances and it was a long process. So we do have funds to replenish that budget and we'll be okay there. And then under the water capital, this is our well six project, and we're hoping to wrap that up soon. So that's at about 85% right now. Otherwise, the rest of it at 67% is looking good. That being said, in our conversation about the current emergency, state of emergency, we know that there'll be significant drops in our revenues. And so our upcoming budget will be a different story. We'll touch a little bit on that when we talk about the COVID-19 discussion item later in the agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Does anybody have any questions?
Comments? Okay, so then we'll go on to item 4F, reports from city council appointees to regional organizations and committees. Cesar, would you like to report on Lafco?
I think Bill did a wonderful job.
We think so, too. So, anything at all? All right, we'll go on to John Freeman.
No, no, there was no meetings between last week and today.
Okay. All right, so Councilman DeVries.
I have to report.
Okay. Vice Mayor Jordan?
No meetings.
Okay. Well, I did have a meeting for the area agency on aging, but everything's on hold for them right now. And the one thing, though, that I do have to report is the Homenes de Antonio, they were having a really hard time keeping up with the food supply and all the people that were signing up for Meals on Wheels and all. And, but anyway, the community came together and they donated, the county donated a pallet of tomato sauce and sauces for spaghetti. And so they're good for quite a while with that. And then the mission, the old missions of Juan Batista, they had a lot of food left over from their Thanksgiving dinner. And so it was all non-perishable. So that was, it was a truckload that they went and they took to the community center. And then there was a collection of over $600 that was collected through the city. One of our local community members took that over to Pauline. So Pauline wanted everybody to know that she thanks everyone from the bottom of her heart. She was very grateful to have received all that, all that help. Nice.
Thank you.
Okay, so then now we go on to action items. So, action item number eight, consider declaring abatement of certain properties and noticing a public hearing. Fire Marshal Charlie Bedola.
Mary, I have a comment. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, on that resolution, there's a typo. It says that the public hearing will be Monday, May 22nd, 21st, and it's a Tuesday. Maybe I'm going to be a biggie, but...
No, that's critical.
Yeah, it's a typo and it could mislead you.
So where is it, Cesar?
In the resolution.
That's it.
Okay, well, thank you.
It's going to be Tuesday, Tuesday, May 19th, correct?
May 19th.
Okay, well, we'll make that correction.
Oh, it should be Tuesday. It says Monday. I get it, I get it.
So the date is wrong.
Yes, the day.
But the day of the week is incorrect.
The day of the week is incorrect.
Yeah, the day of the week.
Thank you, Cesar.
Stuff like that jumps out at me. I don't know, maybe that's the nature of it.
No, that's good.
Did Charlie?
Great, good job.
Did Charlie want to give a report?
Charlie, are you going to give us a report?
Hi, Madam Mayor, and we're helping council members. It's that time of year where we've driven through and controlled the area and checked out for the extra lawn weeds. So we have a good count on them. And after this, then we'll go ahead and send the letters out, give them a month, and it'll actually go until the Monday. And then the next day is when it gets approved. So that's your 30 days. And then from there, we can figure out how to get it taken care of. We have a, we have a contracted mower that we can utilize with that. But most people are getting it unencomplined on their own. We haven't had to take it any farther. In addition to that, we're going to go ahead and patrol throughout the area, like San Juan Oaks and work with Cal Fire, I mean, San Juan Canyon, work with Cal Fire to get those people to start getting their defense things up. And then I'll hit the county lots to surrounding San Juan Batista too to make sure their fire safety also. So it's not just the city, it's the city and the surrounding areas and up into the canyon.
Okay, good. Thank you. So do we...
I have a question, Charlie.
Sure.
Have you connected with the group up in the canyon? There's about 10 or 12 people up there that are...
Yeah, we connect and, yeah, we know very well.
Okay, cool.
The Fire Safety Council, the Fire Safety Council.
So is there any public comment? Public comment? So Cesar, you already said your comment. So Councilman Freeman, do you have a comment or a question?
No, thanks very much, Madam Mayor.
Councilman DeVries, do you have anything to say?
No comment.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Jordan?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so...
Can I add something else to that?
Yes.
Just for everyone, information, if you guys, if anyone does see a lot that needs to be redebated or taking care of, just call down to the station and then with the address, and then we'll get a letter out to them. They usually comply pretty quick when we get them a letter out. So if we have any questions or any locked-in questions, just regardless, just send us the address and then we'll send out a letter to them also.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Will do.
And Mayor, I just want to qualify that the vacant lot known as Washington Street Park over by Lang Street, that is on the city's list to cut the weeds on that park and diss that. We did have a citizen request we do that. We thought we'd get some more rain, so we'll be out soon to take care of that.
All right, good, thank you.
Set the example.
All right. So now we move on to possible action.
Yes, we need to adopt the resolution, correct?
Yeah. We're on 13... We're on 13?
We're on...
This will be 202014.
14. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve a resolution 202014 declaring the condition of certain properties to constitute a public nuisance and ordering the abatement of weeds thereon and noticing a hearing for the receipt of objections to the proposed abatement.
All right, sir.
Thank you. There's been a first and a second roll call vote.
Councilmember DeVries? Was that a yes?
A roll call vote, yes.
Yeah, I vote yes, sorry.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Edge?
Yes.
All members of the council being present, the motion as stated by the maker passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right. Now we move on to item 5B, approved resolution for issuance of Proposition 218 Notice for Setting Solid Waste Collection Rates Effective July 1, 2020 per Approved Franchise Agreement. Kathleen Gallagher, San Benito County. Is she here?
Yes, Kathleen's on the line, and she's got a few slides to share with us. Kathleen, if you want to share your screen, that would be great. This is, this is part of a...
I sent a little bit earlier today. I wondered if you would have a chance to load that.
Yes.
If I can share it screen.
Okay, sometimes it's easier because you're the author, but I can share it and we can thumb through it.
If you could, that would be great.
Sure, sure. Let me see if I can find it.
The council will be happy to know that it's not a lot of slides.
It's not what?
A lot of slides.
So I've got it on my PowerPoint. It's all loaded up here.
Okay, I see the Lafco...
Right, I'm getting there.
Got it.
Oh, where is it? There we go. Sorry.
Please sit by.
I know. There we go. Oh, hello. Try that again. PowerPoint. S U B C.
I don't know how you can read that.
I thought I had it.
Oh, I'm suffocating. I am, too.
Gosh. No, that's not it. I'm sorry, hold on, I thought I had it loaded. And I just have those two, okay. Hold on, please.
We have to get you on mouse.
I know. Pardon me, signing in. Toot toot, this will just take a minute. By the way, make it down. There we go, city council tonight. And we have this one. Agenda San Juan Batista. How embarrassing. Let's see. That's not it.
Well, I wonder if she could do it if...
How do I get over there? Sorry. I'm not very good at this, I guess.
I'm just wondering if she could, if does she...
I know. Well, I thought she would, but that's all right.
And thank you for seeing, I was attempting to do share screen and it's not...
It's not cooperating?
Not accepting it. It's only seven slides.
And I have six attachments here and I can't see them all. All right, I just can't see all the attachments here. That's my issue. Okay. San Juan Batista, council briefing notes, agenda UBC. Is that it? Is that it? No, that's not it. Well, you know, we may just have to limp along, sorry.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm not finding it.
And my apologies, it's the, it is seven slides in your agenda packet that have...
There they are.
But...
No, that's not it.
Yeah, I advise to the council. I'm happy to answer questions. So can you give an overview?
Thank you.
One more time?
Thank you, sorry.
Quickly, overview of this item there. And you certainly have plenty of time to answer questions. So very quickly, I'm Kathleen Gallagher. I'm the Integrated Waste Management Manager. As a county employee and a contract, I know many of you. For the folks that don't know me, San Juan is a member of Solid Waste Recycling Joint Powers Authority that was actually developed in 1995 to meet the mandates for recycling household hazard waste and organics consistently. So we manage those programs and we report compliance as a regional competency for San Juan, City of Hollister, and the county. I wanted to clarify that I'm not in college staff. I am, I administer as well as being a stotler, who I know many of you know are excellent identity and analyst. county staff on contracts, oversee and manage the integrated waste management programs, and I've been doing it for about five and a half years. Carol May is the repo controller who's also on the line. Um, he is, as obviously as his title, he's a controller for San Benito County, as well as Santa Clara County for Recology. Um, he is the person that calculates the methodology, uh, and administers the, uh, the rate adjustment. Both that, a long intro. Um, so the recommendation from the council this evening is to issue the proposition to wait to be noticed, uh, of the public hearing that's currently scheduled for June twenty-twenty. And the purpose of issuing that notice is to simply nullify rate payers of the new rates that are going effective July first. Um, the franchise agreement, sorry, I just wanted to, was that a question?
No. Sorry, I messed up.
No problem. Um-
I'm messing up a lot here.
... again in 2018, and, uh, this was after competitive procurement, there were three companies bid on a request for proposal. Recology was the Loth proposer, and they were selected by a selection committee that consists of city manager of San Blas, city manager of Hollister, and C A O of the county. Um, and, and included, and included a provision for annual rate adjustment for Recology. Um, the rates paid for collection and disposal of garbage, uh, for collection of proppanting recyclables, for yard waste, organics, that many of those new programs that may have seen business citizens and residents in 2018, these were critical to help us rate-stay mandate as an agency, again, with San Juan, Hollister, and the county. What we're not needing is mandates. Um, these particular franchise agreements were, um, were critical to help us meet, meet those mandates that , um, the state requires. Um, so the purpose of particularly, you know, is hearing process, I know you're familiar with those. Um, the action for the council is to approve the issuance of that public hearing, and this-
Well done.
... for the council, which, which Recology would be mailing out these public notices to the property owners in San Juan, um, of residents, as well as businesses. Um, and now this was for your time, but we have council weigh-in on this, and the city is basically following the majority protest for the proposition two eighteen, and as you might recall, the majority protest is fifty percent plus one. Um, so once we make public notices, um, and if we receive a majority protest, meaning fifty percent plus one, uh, protests are received, then the council will be able to approve those solid waste rates at the June six public hearing. But if there was no majority protest, the solid waste, solid waste rates would be approved. Um, real quickly, what does these hypotheticals look like for a San Juan resident? Um, this slide that unfortunately you can't see-
Yeah, we can.
-to let you know-
We can see it.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can't see those, fantastic. Um, seventy percent of San Juan residents have a thirty-two gallon container or smaller, uh, if that is collected weekly. So the thirty-two gallons clean rate on a monthly basis is thirty-three dollars and seven eight cents. So that's an increase of one dollar and forty-five cents per month. And for residents that have a twenty-gallon cleaner for their new rate of one point dollars and seven cents, and that's an increase of one dollar and a twenty-one cents. It's currently with the dollars that's approved in the franchise agreement, increases four point five percent. Wanted to give, it's a really quick reminder that this is a rate that includes all those new services, which is the pretty bulky, I like to pick up, the electronic recycling programs, the environmental days, the great events that Selena puts on, Thursday, these programs are, as well as the new organics programs, because California's passed a lot of legislation in the last several years around greenhouse gas redevelopments, and it's mostly about picking organics out of the landfill, and that's where a lot of those new programs came in, um, for San Juan, Hollister, and the county, um, on the round of, uh, uh, bill number in 2018. Um, the proposition two eighteen includes, uh, the various rates for residents, for our businesses, and for organics. Um, this is the, this is the snapshot of what those rates-
What did I just do?
Uh-oh.
I didn't quite follow that. driveway, and there's some additional charges. All of those rates are internally in a document that's tapped into Integrated Waste Management offices. If there's more information, it's also on Integrated Waste Management website.
I have your-
The purpose of these tables is exactly the largest factors of where, uh, our residents and our businesses have the services. Again, over seventy percent of our San Juan residents have, um, the thirty-two thousand or the twenty gallons, which is excellent, meaning they're, uh, recycling, uh, a significant amount, and using organics programs, which is, which is ideal to help-
Screen sharing is paused. Why is the screen sharing paused?
And so the annual rate adjustment calculation on this slide, uh, basically gives-
Why did it pause?
... a more view of how-
So we could see it, and no one else could?
The franchise agreement has an attachment E that goes into excruciating detail about how the revenue method of charging is calculated. It includes the rate adjustment that's based on a consumer price index and a days, days of fuel index that are adjusted-
Next slide.
... in operating costs. It also includes landfill disposal costs, recycling or organics, processing are also included in that rate adjustment. Um, I'm going to answer more questions. And Carol May, the organic controller, questions about how the calculation, um, I, I certainly invite anyone to this, um, to myself as your, um, as your I W N staff and Recology, um, Recology's controller. I did want to note, we're, we're in these super challenging times. I've been talking to Recology, the, about due to shelter in place, and the good news is Recology has been, um, has been responsive. They are suspending service when a business calls in and asks, basically, obviously because our businesses are closed, uh, they notify, Recology will suspend the service for that business and not bill, um, uh, through these challenging times. Recology also is continuing to provide service, even if there's a non-payment. Um, they've been very responsive. They've been working through a lot of challenges, working, um, to try and keep their drivers safe, uh, trying to put the organics processing folks safe. Um, so there's a lot of challenges, so I, um, I do thank Recology for being a partner with us and trying to keep it within the distance, as well as our residents and businesses. And then lastly, Recology also provides a lifeline, um, for just rates for low-income residents. Um, these are on the, uh, Recology site, and I'm happy to answer any questions specific to that. Um, that is the overview, and I might ask if, uh, if it's agreeable to the council and to, um, request that, uh, Carol May, if there are any questions, um, from the city council or, or the-
Yes.
So, okay, are you still there?
Thank you, Kathleen, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay. So yeah, so I want to call for the, uh, public to, uh, if there's any comment.
The council would, any questions from the council first?
No, I, I'm following my little, my little cheat sheet here.
Okay, sorry.
Any, any, uh, public comment? Okay, if not, then we'll go on to the council. Councilman Flottes, do you have any questions or comments?
No questions or comments.
Councilman Freeman?
Just to comment, uh, the data for the great public on the large item, recycling, I thought it was hard right now because, you know, with all the restrictions, it's so difficult to get out that stuff, but it is being done on a regular basis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir, college.
Councilman DeVries?
No comment.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Jordan?
No comment.
Okay, and I don't have any comments. Kathleen, thank you very much for a great presentation.
You need to action on the resolution?
Everybody stays well, and I, I appreciate your patience.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for your patience, Kathleen.
Now we go on to-
Yeah.
You gonna adopt the resolution?
I was gonna-
Yeah.
-adopt the resolution.
To make a motion.
Well, I'm gonna make the motion to adopt the resolution, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so I need a, a motion to adopt the resolution.
Don't move. I make the motion.
Thank you, Sessa. A second, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Vice Mayor, uh, Jordan seconded. Roll call vote.
Councilmember DeVries?
Yeah.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Edge?
Yes.
All members of the council being present, the motion as stated by the maker passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you. Stay well.
Now, uh, we'll go on to item four, uh, five C, proposal to add digital content to library collection. Uh, so-
Rochelle.
Rochelle?
Hi. Yes. Um, so I would like to add hoopla digital content to the library's collection picture. It's a one-time fee of a thousand dollars to start the service, and it would add, uh, seven hundred forty-seven thousand items to our collection, that patrons could download from their digital device. I didn't prepare any slides, hopefully have the-
Thank goodness.
... server.
Thank goodness.
It's okay.
A lot of pages too.
It is.
Yes, you're welcome.
I have a question, Rochelle.
Yes.
Is there a, a charge for a monthly service charged to that, or just a one-shot?
No, if it, it's-
Dear.
Face average is about a dollar nine and six.
It's our internet connection, it's our wifi.
And, uh, that would be charged to the library, not to the patron.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Any comments from our, uh, council? Council, uh, man Freeman, do you have a comment, a question?
No, uh, it looks great to me, it looks great to me.
Okay, Councilman DeVries?
No, no comment. Great work, Rochelle.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Jordan?
I forgot to add, uh, that San Benito County Free Library has, uh, twenty-five different online resources, and I had looked at some of the others, and they did have a monthly charge of them. That's why I zeroed in on hoopla, because, um, it was just that one-time fee, and because I won't be adding any more physical, um, materials this year, I thought it was a good time to, uh, use up my material, such as on something like this that we can use, uh, throughout the future.
Okay, so did you have a comment?
Uh, no, thank you very much, I've been-
I've been waiting for a while for this one. Totally thrilled, thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your hard work. You did a great job.
Thanks.
Rochelle, thank you. Okay, so now we go on to, uh, action?
Um, we have the third street, item D.
We have to, um, make a motion here.
Oh, yes, there's a resolution attached, right?
Yes.
So, do I have a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-16, approving an agreement with Hoopla to provide digital content services to the Luck Library in San Juan Bautista.
Right, second.
Thank you. So you got the-
Councilmember DeVries? Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Edge?
Yes.
All members of the council being present, the motion as stated by the maker passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right, so now we go on to item D, award a contract for the Third Street reconstruction project to Chapin. Um, report from City Manager Reynolds.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Um, we have been in design with this project for probably fifteen months now. Um, just as Harrison Associates was leaving the city engineer role, uh, we got an update from them showing that the cost of the project was gonna be more than anticipated in the budget for this fiscal year. Um, when we came back at the mid-year budget, uh, we agreed that we would consolidate some of our street projects into this single effort, and then work on Mukalemi and Polk Street at a later date. We're also working on a pavement management program that'll prioritize our need for future street improvements. So this is a word of contract, uh, for the reconstruction from Tualhaleme Street to Mukalemi Street along Third. And Third Street, uh, this portion of it hasn't been redone, uh, I don't know how long. Uh, it's, it's had layers and layers of seal placed over it, so much that it crowns in the top and is obscuring driveways and sidewalks. So the project itself is long overdue. Um, it actually was sent out to bid with an engineer's estimate of one point five million dollars, and this is the first time I've seen in the last ten years of public works that a project came in under the engineer's estimate, at one point three two nine, so one million three hundred twenty-nine thousand. So, uh, the timing is good, uh, to be working. We got five excellent bids, and Don Chapin, uh, barely came under the wire, and the bid tab there is attached for you. These are all very reputable companies, um, that we've worked with in the past. So we're fortunate to have some good bids, and that made the program competitive. Um, in terms of financing, um, they estimate a ten percent contingency of a hundred and thirty-two, nine hundred, um, for a total estimated cost of, of one point four, uh, million dollars. All of the funding is described in some detail under fiscal impact, because it's important to note in this time where our general fund is so vulnerable, that none of these funds are from the general fund. Um, they're all, uh, committed from uses exclusively for street improvements. So we couldn't use this money to balance our budget in any other way, and so for that reason, we would bring this capital improvement project forward, where if this were a general fund project, we may not be bringing it forward at this time. So I think that distinction is important. Um, we have an opportunity to review this budget, um, when we come in June with our, with our proposed capital improvement plan, and if, uh, we are, uh, spending money on inspection and other things causing this to, to bump into the, 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 the one point four million dollar amount, we can consider adjusting that accordingly. The project is estimated to be done in August, and so, uh, Don Chapin's really excited about getting started. Maybe we can get started in a month or so if the, uh, city approves the agreement before you tonight. Um, we did have some communication from the public. Um, let's see, we have, um, Clerk Cent, did you want to read some of the, we have just one comment?
I think, we have one from Cara Vonck.
Yeah, from Cara Vonck. Do you have the one five D? I have it here if you don't.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have that one.
Okay, so I can read Cara's comments, and I think she's on line with us tonight. Uh, maybe she wants to read her own comments. Um, but if the council has any questions, I'm happy to answer questions before we go to public comment.
Yeah, so I, I just want the other, uh, to get it in the process.
So, um, we have, um, we have Anderson Pacific Engineering, we have, um, Granite Rock Company, we have Precision- Granite Rock Company, we have Precision, Precision Grade Incorporated, Monterey Peninsula Engineering, and then Don Chapin.
Okay, great.
Hard to read that print.
Yeah. So, um, Cara, were you going to read your letter or do you want Don to read it?
You want me to read your notes?
Well, I can just, I don't have, I didn't print it out.
Okay. I have it here for the record.
I can make a couple of comments now.
Sure.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, um, our house front on this section is Third Street. And we have waited, I think, at least twenty years for this to finally occur. We're very pleased and I hope you approve it. Uh, as, uh, Don mentioned, the road is very highly crowned. It is full of potholes, gravel, dirt. Um, you know, it all ends up in the gutters, it ends up in our homes. It's a really bad part of town. And, you know, this is a gateway to our downtown and our historic district. So, I'm just praying that you will approve this. I did have a question about sewer. You know, we have some sewer issues, our sewer lines run back to Fourth Street. And, uh, Don did get back to me and said that we, we could connect, you know, at our own expense to the new sewer line that's going to be going in. Uh, so that's something that we'll have to investigate. But I hope you'll go forward and approve this contract, thank you.
Thank you, Cara.
Thank you, Cara.
So, um, any other public comment? Okay, how about our council? Counselman Flores, do you have any questions, comments?
No question or comment about time.
Counselman Freeman?
I just echo what Cara said, it's been a long, long time and I'm really glad it's happened. And, uh, I completely support it. It is a gateway to the town, uh, Third Street's the most important street we have and, you know, in front of her house, it's, it's not good at all.
Yeah.
So, we really need to fix it.
Right, okay, thank you. Counselman DeVries? Any?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had a, a few follow-up questions regarding the bid. Uh, Don, did I hear you say that you got bids from Chapin, Granite Rock, MPE, and what's that fourth?
There's, um, five total, um, Anderson Pacific and, Anderson Pacific and Precision Grade. So we had, we had bids as high as two million, um, and then Chapin was one point three-two-nine, so... Sorry.
Uh, do you, in your experience at what's, uh, Salinas, Don, I was thinking you worked with a lot of those companies, is not all of them?
Yeah. Yes, certainly. Um, MPE's hard at work on Main Street, uh, finally, uh, redeveloping Salinas Main Street now. And MPE's bid was, um, oh, a hundred thousand dollars higher than Chapin's.
Okay. Uh, and I know Granite Rock has a pretty long history of, uh, working in, not long, I don't know how long it is, but they recently, Granite did a bunch of work on, uh, on streets. Uh, so was one of the determining factors in selecting Chapin as the bid, uh, or awarding the contract to Chapin, was the time early, except they were the little bidder?
Yes, it, this is a, a large dollar amount subject to the formal bidding process. And so you have to write a, a tight set of specifications, which I believe CSG accomplished because the bids are so competitive. Yeah, this is a word to the lowest bidder. Yeah.
Okay, great, those are all the other questions I had, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember.
And, and thank you, uh, City Manager Reynolds, you've done a great job in selecting the, the contractor that, that's going to do this work.
And help with our city engineers as well.
Yes, yes. Okay, so, now we go on to, um...
Oh, you wanna, we have a resolution again.
Yeah, an action, it's... Oh, okay, so...
Short of anybody else doing it.
Council, we're, we're all done with, um, comments, so now we go on to the emotion.
Thank you, perfect.
I'd like to make a motion to award the contract to the Third Street Reconstruction Project to Chapin.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. So, go on with the roll call.
Councilmember DeVries?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Edge?
Yes.
All members of the council being present, the motion as stated by the maker passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, now we go on to item, uh, let's see, is it E?
Yes, five D.
I lost track of where I am.
Five D.
Okay, where are we? Five, six. E, okay. No, we already, oh, we authorize the city manager to execute, execute a professional service agreement with RRM Design Group to complete the Luck Park Master Plan.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Um, you, some of you may recall that our city engineer Julie had to go off on, uh, surgery, uh, shortly after arriving in July. And, uh, an engineer by the name of Michael Ballard, uh, stepped up and pinch-hit for her. And, Michael came back and said, you know, I really have a thing for helping with parks. And I said, wow, we've got parks that need work, uh, Rudy Park, Franklin Park. Um, and, and the city manager prior to me, Ed, Ed Tewes, had sent this park out to bid, uh, in, in May. And, and this proposal had arrived June nineteenth, twenty nineteen. So I said, Michael, can you help me get these, these several projects rolling for us? And so this is just one of several park projects I hope to bring forward to the council in the next few months. Rudy Park is way overdue with the restrooms and we're actually analyzing the design, uh, that we had, uh, done by volunteers in Franklin Circle. So we're, we're moving forward, which is really exciting. So to that end, uh, this is, uh, proposal, uh, for the RRM Design Group and I sent out the updated, uh, April, April tenth, uh, proposal to the council. I don't know if anyone had a chance to read it, but it's interesting because it actually has an in-depth community engagement process. So this is a decision tonight to award the contract to the RRM Group. Um, and upon which, uh, the, the very first task is the, the project startup, but then the second task is a, a workshop and city planning commission and city council meetings and, and that's where the cost is in this twenty-five thousand dollar proposal. So, everyone will have a chance to participate, uh, plans will be drafted and then taken back to the community and evaluated. So, uh, it's a reiterative process, um, that's all based on, uh, community input, it's a community's park and we want the community to take ownership of it. So of course, um, that's what this master plan is all about, about working with the community to come up with a design. Well, how do you do that in these circumstances? And I'm, and I'm hoping that they are better at, um, Zoom than I am. And can run, and can run more effective, uh, council, uh, the community input. So, um, with that, um, Ed did mention in his RFP that maybe we would put a, uh, city hall there and I know we had some, some comments back and forth. Um, and I think we mistakenly used the word shack instead of cabin referring to one of the facilities. So, I extended my apologies to Emily Van Zell earlier today. Um, and, and just want to get started on the right foot and, and on a positive note and, and get this project rolling for us. Getting back to the deed and, and the purpose of the property was donated to the city was for museums and libraries. And so we'd stick to that theme as, as, as a guide as we work through our, uh, community outreach. So, um, with that, um, uh, does the council have any questions? Um, are you familiar with the RRM Group? I've worked with them before, they're a landscape architect firm, uh, out of, uh, San Luis Obispo. And they're a very good firm that we've used before in this area, they have an office near us. And so, uh, Michael Ballard looked into their, their resumes and their pro forma and, and it all looks good. So, we're ready to go forward with the recommendation.
Nice, thank you. Any comments from the, uh, council?
One from me.
Freeman?
Yes, I, I read this letter from, from various people, uh, associates with the left and right, and, and my real comment is, um, so, we started this process with parks about two years ago. And the main, the main emphasis was, um, was getting a dog park, a lot of people are emphatic about that. And, uh, we even just put that in the project proposal to raise this house. Uh, it was chicken life, it was crazy. And there's, uh, things to look at, like, did Emma's all effective, no? And he needs a big place to run. Um, so I was just wondering why we didn't go through, um, the Lang Street Park first?
This project was already identified in the budget, um, and so I'm just moving forward on an approved CIP. There was no money budgeted currently for the Lang Street Park. So, also, the Prop sixty-eight, uh, monies have not come available yet, we anticipated receiving two hundred thousand dollars, uh, from Proposition sixty-eight. We hope that that's still forthcoming. Um, and when we get that money, I think it'd be a good time to talk about the Lang Street Park because it's a much bigger endeavor.
Yeah.
So, my next question is follow-up on that. Does the company that's going to be able to access state grant law to build more parks? Is the state going to, uh, how can I put this, uh, yank it really out under?
Uh, I, I don't believe they can. Prop sixty-eight was actually, uh, they sold bonds for the specific purpose of building parks and so they're obligated to use the bond proceeds for parks.
Thank you.
Yep.
Counselman DeVries, do you have any comments, questions?
Yeah, no questions but one comment, uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Don, my correction is, uh, Cindy, I'm trying, I'm trying to anticipate, uh, some public comment with the reminder received here shortly based upon the letters that were written by the Historical Society and the Library Auxiliary, et cetera. But if a design consultancy firm is retained, would part of their responsibility be to solicit the input and feedback of, of groups like the Historical Society and the Library Auxiliary and other stakeholders in the community?
Yes, exactly, exactly, that's what it's all about. Um, you meet with stakeholders independently and then you try to bring them together in a community meeting and draw the common threads between everyone's interests, that's the, the, the traditional design charrette process. And I believe that's consistent with the RRM Group's proposal.
So it's, it's not a fair assessment, Mayor, to say that if the council decides to go the direction of retaining this firm, that would mean to be exclusion of the input from the Historical Society and the Library Auxiliary, et cetera, correct?
Well, no one would be excluded, it's meant to be an inclusive project, process. It's an inclusive community engagement process.
Yeah, and I, I think a, a good argument to make, to make that a lot of those visions held by the Historical Society and the auxiliary and others, um, have a better chance of coming to fruition. And so a real pro is assigned to make those things happen.
Right, right.
Yes. Okay.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor, that's my comment.
Thank you, thank you. Any other comments from the public?
I have a comment.
Okay, who is this?
So we have, we have comments from five, from, from Emily, from Georgiana Glarte, from, um, the San Juan Batista Historical Society, from Banda Gilbert, and Cara. Now, the city clerk can read those, uh, into the record, um, I have the written copies here. Or, or if those folks are, are on the line now, they can, they can provide their own testimony, either way.
So we're going to go ahead and read the, the comments from, with, uh, by our city clerk.
Hold on, just, yeah, thank you, Laura.
They'll speak in...
They're gonna...
Yes.
They're going to read what you sent us. Go ahead.
Mayor Edge, members of the city council and staff, as president of the San Juan Batista Historical Society, I make the following comments on behalf of the Board of Directors. Number, number one, correction, in her will dated November sixth, nineteen seventy-four, Francesca D. Luck bequeathed her entire estate, including the block bounded by Third, Monterey, Second, and Tuolumne to the city of San Juan Batista in the provision that the land be used for a new public park, museum, and library as a memorial to her father Carl Martin Luck, who built the gas station in nineteen nineteen. It should remain a park in perpetuity per the donor's wishes. As a single unmarried woman, there are not likely to be any heirs to Francesca's estate with whom to consult. Number two, in order to meet the requirements of Francesca Luck's will, the Historical Society has managed her father's gas station directly on Historic Highway one oh one as a museum and archive, and archives, and is opened by appointment for research. An open house is held annually in November for the public. Number three, correction, the historic structure moved to Luck Park in two thousand and six and restored by members of the San Juan Batista Historical Society is the Jim Jack Cabin, not shack. In addition to being historic, it is also a valuable cultural resource because Jim Jack was a Chinese immigrant who arrived in the San Juan Valley in the eighteen eighties. The surrounding landscape must provide context to Jim Jack's life in San Juan as mustard king and generous benefactor. Sandy Linden, Professor Emeritus at Cabrillo College, has written extensively about local Asian immigrants, including Jim Jack. He would be an excellent resource for consultation. Possible relocation of the cabin where? Number four, in the nineteen seventies, the San Juan Batista Historical Society helped spearhead fundraising for the Luck Park development, landscaping, and renovation of the old gas station. Yet we have been omitted from any discussion of the Luck Park Master Plan despite our having expressed interest in being involved. We reiterate our interest in our continued involvement in Luck Park. Please include our board in the site visit to Luck Park, especially the museum and cabin. Five, as an aside, the block owned by the Luck family included not only the gas station but also the house in which the Luck family lived before moving to Salinas. The three-story Victorian, which has been the Dr. Charles Cargill House. Dr. Cargill, eighteen forty to nineteen hundred, served in the Civil War and two terms in the legislature. Sadly, the house burned to the ground on April fifteenth, nineteen sixty. On a personal note, I believe that City Hall should remain downtown in the heart of the ci, of the city, physically and symbolically near the State Park, Mission, Fire Department, School and Business Community. I also believe that the Community Center is a perfect centrally-located facility for large public gatherings and the city must invest in installing acoustics to facilitate effective public meetings. Thank you, on behalf of the Board of Directors, Wanda, Wanda Giebert, President. Comment, Luck Park Master Plan, what is the scope of the Luck Park Master Plan? It focus appears to be on expanding the library and museum, building footprints, and building a community space. Excluded from the contract is architectural design and tree assessment or arborist report. Wouldn't a park master plan include architectural design and a concept comprehensive landscape plan? One, Luck Museum, the Luck Museum, a former gas station, is a historic resource fronting on Historic Highway one oh one. It needs context, context is underlined. The master plan should identify ways to restore the building using Secretary of Interior standards. Further, it should identify ways to enhance the facility's architecture and history into a vibrant, lively, and exciting addition to the park and to the city's authentic historic tourist attractions. None of this is communicated in the contract. Two, Jim Jack Cabin, never a shack. Another historic resource associated with... Another historic resource associated with an important historic figure in our city's history. This resource needs context to link the cabin to its natural habitat and to Mr. Jim Jack's livelihood, mustard king. Landscaping here is essential. Ideas have included truck gardens, planting original historic Mission grapes referenced to the cabin's original location, and of course, mustard. None of this is communicated in the contract. Three, community space. Community space is always desirable, but not at the cost of open space. Wouldn't it make more sense to spend more of this money on installing acoustics in our community hall? Thank you for considering my comments. Cara Vong, San Juan Batista. To members of the San Juan Batista City Council, from Georgiana Galarte, a faithful member of the public and several nonprofit organizations, regarding city council agenda, April 21, 2020, action item 5E, Luck Park Museum, Luck Park Library Museum. Dear Council, before hiring a consultant tonight, please take some time to study the availability of help from those of us who have not been asked to participate in plans for the Luck Park. Neither I nor several organizations that have been with the project since 1979 have been asked to attend a meeting. Please study the work of residents who have, without use of city funds, voluntarily provide funds and effort to the city's inherited Carl Martin Luck Memorial Park since 1979. Since 1974, the city of San Juan Batista has depended upon two major stakeholders, the San Juan Batista Library Auxiliary and the San Juan Batista Historical Society, two old nonprofits, to handle the city's inheritance from Ms. Francesca Luck. Emily Renzel has outlined several details in her letter to you. Here are some other details you need to know. The city in 1975 immediately appointed members of the Library Auxiliary and the Historical Society to a committee charged with the handling, with handling the park, library, museum project. These two old nonprofit organizations are still working tenants of the city's Carl Martin Luck Memorial Park. The San Juan Batista Historical Society did not raise the funds for the restoration of the Luck Gas Station. It helps with the work. The San Juan Batista Library Auxiliary raised over $20,000 by sponsoring VFW post number 6359 barbecues. It took 20 years. Historical Society members were given the job of turning the city's junk storeroom into the Luck Museum in this California historically significant gas station built entirely of San Juan Batista cement in 1919. Repairs handled by the Historical Society were completed by 2000 so that Anzar High School students could set up the museum as its first community service class project. Our three community libraries, Aromas, San Juan Batista, and Anzar, had obtained a $76,000 grant from the California State Library to purchase our first digitizing equipment and teach Anzar High School students the skills of being leaders in our community. Anzar High School students set up the museum files and held community events to demonstrate their digitizing and leadership skills. The artifacts from the Jim Jack Cabin were handled by a fifth grade San Juan elementary school student. His work is digitized with our first digital camera now, too outdated. Digitizing Aromas Library Historic Snyder Collection was complete then. My personal opinion, but also my opinion as a member of the organizers mentioned here, is that I slash they have been diligent and faithful to the Luck Park project. We are volunteers with a proven record. Please take time to look at our work. Maybe, we may be old, but we are not useless. Thank you, Georgiana Galarte. Please, tonight, do not approve the hiring of a consultant to complete the Luck Park Mayor Mary Edge and members of the city council, although I am secretary of the board of the San Juan Batista Historical Society, I am writing this letter as an individual citizen. It is my personal opinion, so it should not be misconstrued as a position of the San Juan Batista Historical Society. While I think a review of the existing master plan is warranted, I strongly object to the idea of relocating City Hall to this block. It is not the kind of public amenity clearly envisioned by Ms. Luck, nor was it contemplated in the existing adopted master plan for the site. Public parks should not be viewed as spare real estate or... Public parks should not be viewed as spare real estate for whatever rims a municipality may have. San Juan Batista should dedicate all of its current parks in perpetuity. In 1974, Francesca Luck bequeathed her one acre property to the city of San Juan Batista. The gift was on the condition that the property be held, used, and maintained exclusively for a public library, public museum, and public park in memory of her father Carl Martin Luck. Although neither Ms. Luck nor her attorney are still around to challenge any other uses, I think it is pretty clear that Ms. Luck wanted the property to be for the people of San Juan to enjoy as public amenities. Ms. Luck's estate sold several other properties to create an endowment of $121,000 for the development of the Luck Park Library and Museum. A citizens committee spent two years developing the current master plan. Preliminary architectural plans for the $357,000 Luck Museum and Library were approved by the city council on September 27, 1977. Valley World, October 1977. Phase one was the current library complex, which is, which was estimated to cost $128,000. Phase two, not anticipated in the near future, would include a 2,900 square foot museum meeting room, and in 1977 was estimated to cost $229,000. The shell of the old filling station was considered appropriate for storage, restrooms, or perhaps a display area of historical artifacts. Valley World, October 1977. Quotation from San Jose State Thesis by Betty Lorraine Knutson, 1998, pages 49 through 50. In the late 1990s, the San Juan Batista Historical Society worked with the city to open a museum and archives in the historic Luck Gas Station building. The society raised funds and recruited volunteers to restore the historic building, and in 2000, an open house celebration was held for the museum. The San Juan Batista Historical Society has been managing the museum since then. The museum hosts visitors on an appointment basis and has held an annual open house every October. In 2017, San Juan Batista Historical Society members raised $8,300 to re-roof the museum. And in February 2019, the San Juan Batista Historical Society hosted over 130 people for a very successful box lunch celebration of the 100th anniversary of the Luck Gas Station building. The Jim Jack Cabin is also his, a historic structure and was moved to the Luck Park Museum area and restored by members of the Historical Society. When the city, when the city is conditionally gifted a property, it is a type of trust between the donor and the city. You as council members are the trustees upon whom they depend to honor their bequested gift. I think it is important that you take this duty seriously and make sure that any considerations of this master planning update are consistent with the conditions of Ms. Francesca's, Ms. Francesca Luck's bequest. Sincerely, Emily M. Renzel. In my letter to the council, I didn't start offering ideas about Luck Park and Luck Museum, figuring that there would be good opportunities once the consultants began their work. But since that may be technologically challenging for many of us, here are some of my ideas. Restroom. The 100-year-old concrete gas station building has remnants of two original restrooms. It would probably be too difficult to recreate a restroom in the remnant currently used as a storage closet, as there must be a sewer outfall somewhere along Third or Monterey, and only cold water would be needed for a sink. When equipment is out there redoing landscaping, it would probably be reasonably easy to connect up a sewer line and water line. A locked bathroom at the museum would make it much more convenient for us to do work there and not be limited to library hours. Grading and ADA access. I previously mentioned to you my idea of a concrete skirt around the entire museum, including the portico entry area. Then the surrounding landscape would need to be sloped away from Luck, even if only to, only to a swale which could direct water away. ADA access could be connected to any part of the skirt. This is such an important project, it would be preferable if it could be done other than online, which is very awkward. I'm going to try to join tonight's council meeting on Zoom. Emily Renzel. Those are the public comments I have.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much for that.
Nice job, Laura.
Okay. So.
Mayor Edge?
Yes.
May I just put a little emphasis point on my letters?
Yes.
You've already had 20 minutes.
I feel very, very, very strongly that when someone bequeaths property to the city with conditions, specifically, let's say, the land will be held, used, and maintained exclusively for a public library, food museum, and public park, that's a condition that you would, you become trustees to honor. And I don't think a City Hall falls into any of those categories and shouldn't be part of this planning process.
Fine.
I think, well, the other thing is that, um, I forgot my other big point. But anyway, I just, oh, no. I understand that time to give some funds for this process. And if that's the case, maybe they're going to wait, enact the contract, but you lay the cross, so real public can be helped. Because I think this matter great public interest and should not be, fall through the cracks in the 19th.
Thank you, Emily. Do we have any other questions or comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor?
Yes. Who is this?
My name is Jeff, my name is Jeff Ferber. I'm a principal and managing partner at our firm, Zygrin. And I just wanted to introduce myself. And if it's appropriate, give a little bit of background about our firm and tell you a little bit about how we handle master planning parks.
That would be great.
Right now?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Our firm is founded in San Luis Obispo. We're 45 years old. I've been at the firm for 31 years. And I really appreciate all of the comments that were expressed tonight, listening to the letters. We specialize in park master planning. We have four offices in California. And we've worked on numerous sites that have historic structures and significant value of community, including properties that have been bequeathed by families and individuals for the purposes of parks and open space. And that includes work in the Bay Area, Southern California, and the Central Coast. So we really appreciate the value of community input and the will of the community to determine its decisions and how the land should be used for the long term. Our intent and the scope of work was to respond to the city's request for proposal. And I think, I think the intent that the city had was to have an inclusive process to talk with stakeholders, including folks that have a lot of knowledge and experience about the property, whether it goes back years and decades ago, or if it's a current interest in the, in the, in the project. So we're, we, I just wanted to call in tonight to see if anyone had any questions. And certainly, give you any background about how we handle dialogue in the master planning process. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, so if I could, if I could ask a quick question of Mr. Ferber, the reason you have a list of limitations and exclusions in your proposal is because this is at the 30,000-foot level. We're not into where each rock and weed is going to be placed. This is a master plan. It's not a specific design of a park. Is that, is that a good way to consider this project, this contract?
Yeah, the challenge with consulting also is you're always trying, you're always trying to match what the community would like to do in terms of planning with, with the physical resources available to do it. And part of our job is to ensure that when you write a scope of work, it's clear and unambiguous in terms of what's included and what's not included. Certainly, this is kind of a very conceptual plan. It's intended to address the community's initial response and desires to have a long-term use of the property. It's not a set of detailed plans that you put out to bid, similar to what you were talking about earlier with one of your level streets. So it's, it's frankly, the very, very early process of gathering input and determining the future. And it's, it's the point in the process where you have the most flexibility to, to develop concepts. I certainly could answer, there's that specific exclusion liking to address, I could do that as well.
There were reference in one of the letters. I just wanted to make sure everyone was, had the same understanding. Thank you.
Okay, so where do, excuse me, where do we go from here? Do we vote?
Does the council have any additional comments, having heard the feedback?
I asked him. I thought I asked him. Did, did, did everybody, all council members voice their opinion, ask questions on this matter?
If I want to answer a question, this is Cara.
Okay.
I'm just not clear on the scope of the contract. It doesn't include architectural design or a landscape plan. You know, it seems to be focused on expanding, building footprints.
Cara.
I don't know.
Excuse.
It seems like, it seems very vague. I feel like it's going to take years.
Okay. Do you want to answer her?
I would let, I would let Mr. Ferber answer that question. It's a very preliminary stage. Where should we start?
Yeah, the reason it doesn't include architectural design is, it's our understanding that, for instance, if you, if the community decided they were going to expand the library or add structures... to expand the library or add structures, first, it's important to determine what those would be, what scale they would be. If you had another historic structure in the community, you're trying to save and you're going to move it to this property, in a master plan, you just need to be able to show the footprint and show where it would go and look at the site plan. If the community were to decide to expand the library, as an example, then you really got a whole different process of programming that needs to be done involving the library, which is separate from kind of the high-level master planning of the site. As far as the landscaping, a plan like this would show conceptually where you might add trees, where you might have drought-tolerant or pollinator gardens. Let's say you wanted a community garden. You would show all of that. So it would show conceptually what you do with the landscape. It wouldn't, it would not select particular plants, specky shrubs, ground covers, and trees at this level.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I also ask a question?
Jesus.
I know I already spoke.
Um, I'd like to say something just, just before you, Emily, and, and this is directed to Mr. Ferber. Is it my understanding that the community, such as the people who have sent in these letters, and their opinion and their concerns, there will be opportunity for these people to voice their opinion, to be involved in what we are planning on doing? It's not going to be something that will not include them in any way. Am I correct in saying that?
Yes, the, uh, that's correct. That's correct. The city staff wrote the RFP to request a number of engagements with the public. The scope of work includes stakeholder, and stakeholder meetings are reaching out to specific individuals with, that the staff would identify who have experience and knowledge with the property. So as an example, members of a historical society, neighbors that are immediately adjacent to the librarian. And then it includes a survey, it includes review of concept plans, and an opportunity to brainstorm how the future of the property would be used. So it very much is designed around using community input to decide.
Okay. Thank you very much. Emily, uh, did you still need to speak?
Yes, I just wanted to make one other point, and it is that there is an existing master plan for the Luck property. And I should, I should think that would be starting, looking at what went into discussions back on that, as a prologue to, to this planning process. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Emily. Okay. So no other comments, questions from councilmen? Okay. So now we go on. We're going to have, uh, do we want to have a, a motion to?
There's a proposed resolution to approve an agreement.
To approve this, uh, this resolution? Do I have a motion from anyone, from any of the council members?
Don't move.
Thank you. Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. There we go. So.
Councilmember De Vries? Councilmember De Vries?
Down to 23.
Is he muted?
Oh, sorry. No, it could not be off mute. Yeah, I go back.
I thought you fell asleep. Okay. Okay.
So, one more time, Councilmember De Vries? So did he mute himself again?
Probably.
Yeah, he shut up.
Ask Danny again for his vote.
Well, he said yes, so.
I didn't hear him.
I heard it also.
Move it.
So is there no way to unmute him?
I don't even know if he's in the room.
Ask, ask him again.
Where is he?
Councilmember De Vries, could you repeat your vote, please?
He's, he's unmuted. Isn't that Danny Joe?
Lower left?
Right there.
Yes, he's unmuted.
Oh, he must have walked away.
Well, he was on his phone. There he is. Dan, Danny, don't mute your phone.
Well, he's unmuted.
He is unmuted.
Did he raise his hand? Oh, no, that's him.
Can he hear his phone?
Oh, God.
We gotta, let's move this over. This is going to take a little time.
All right. Can you mute Dan now?
Yes, I can. I'm going to mute Dan.
Okay. So I did hear him say yes. I mean, but you need to hear him again.
Three out of five members heard him.
Okay. So. Who is that?
It's Dan.
It must be Dan. I can't mute him. I can't mute him.
Okay. Well.
Okay. Keep going.
Keep going.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Edge?
Yes.
So there's no way to get him on the phone, send him a message or something?
But he did say yes.
So I, I couldn't hear.
But Laura didn't hear him.
Yep.
Laura did not hear him. Are you texting him?
Yeah. But he doesn't have his phone, obviously. Yeah, get a 401 with an abstention.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Say yes. Oh, I kept saying, I, I, yeah, I've been saying yes, yes, I voted yes.
Thank you.
All members of the council being present, the motion as stated by the maker passes unanimously.
Okay. Thank you. So now we go on to our discussion items. A, COVID-19 update, and reaffirm the city-state of emergency. City Manager Reynolds.
Thank you. Let me find it.
I am.
Yeah, I'm ready.
I'm so freezing. Are you cold? Oh, my hand is like ice cold. Oh, that's okay. Put it on your hand. No, I'll be fine. I'll be fine. I'll just sit on it. We're going to get in trouble for sharing a coat.
And where is it? Okay. There's Dan. Share the screen. I can't find it. That's not it. I can't get this up. It is okay. Sorry. Dan, Dan. Okay. So I can do that. And I can do that. That might get me there.
Can't see anybody yawning. That's all right. No worries.
Okay. We're not going anywhere, Dan.
We're not going anywhere. Thank you. And now I just got to move the people. Now I can go. Okay, P. Council briefing. Okay. There it is. Okay. All right. We did it.
Okay.
Okay.
Good. Nice job.
Okay. So, thank you. Sorry. I get a little rusty in between reports. So this is our COVID-19 state of emergency update. And as we do at every council meeting, and this is our fifth meeting in a row, we need to reconfirm that, that we are still in a state of local emergency every 21 days, according to our municipal code 5-33040. And so that's, the first point of business in this report is to confirm that. The council does not need to take action, but I, I need to say that before we get started on an update. And as I've done in the past, federal policy changes. I did print out the Washington Post prior to tonight's meeting. Because the Senate passed a $484 billion bill that would expand small business aid, boost money for hospitals and testing. So this is good news for our local businesses. It says on Thursday, the, uh, the House of Representatives will consider this bill. So Congressman Panetta will receive our letter before he votes on Thursday, which is good. It refunds, it puts money back into the paycheck protection program. It says it still might not be enough to meet the surging demand for loans, but at least that's been replenished. The disheartening news for, for me and for City Hall is that the Republicans and Trump administration officials did not go along with their demand for, for funding for states and local, and for cities. So we were hoping that the, the cities would get some relief out of this bill, and not this time. It reports that Schumer said that he hopes to see that addressed in the next package, meaning that there would be a fourth package, and Trump has indicated that he'd be open to it. So that is the status as we know it of the, the federal programs. So there's two loans, as you might recall, the EIDL local applications and the PPP program. We have a number of businesses that are, have enrolled, signed up for the EIDL local app from March. And although we heard news that the program was out of money, that's because these March applications are still being processed, and many businesses were receiving direct deposits yesterday and today of the $10,000, assuming they have more than 10 employees, $1,000 per employee with a $10,000 max. So, um, so that's good news, I hope, that, that our businesses that have applied for that are receiving those deposits. We did meet with a business owner on Monday, and we have our fingers crossed that they are in receipt of those funds today. If not, we do have a contact now with the SBA, and I can call out directly to them and get direct feedback from business owners. And that will facilitate our, our community liaison position, which we'll talk about here shortly. Unemployment benefits have been extended to sole proprietors and individuals. That will start April 28th. Meanwhile, there are still programs available for, for those that are unemployed, and special benefits for taking sick leave or taking care of a family member who's sick. Those are all programs that are, that are still in place, have been made in place for individuals. So, um, again, the state, the governor did his wrap-up yesterday and today. Talked about slight increases in the number of cases, and these are the six points that he made a week ago. And tomorrow, he'll be updating these six points. And this is important because he will start to consider loosening the shelter-in-place restrictions when he can meet all six of these goals. So expanding testing, protecting high-risk groups, including seniors in nursing facilities, ensuring hospitals have enough beds and supplies to care for patients, progress in developing treatments, ability of schools and businesses to support physical distancing, and ability to decide when to reinstitute a stay-at-home order if needed, if there were a resurgence. So the two-day trend continues as slow growth, and, and we're waiting to see a decline. So that's, that's the same curve that we talked about last Tuesday, and we're still following this line with slow growth through the month of May. So hopefully, that'll turn down sooner than later, and we can start to consider how to relax those orders. That's, that's where we are with the federal and state level. Today, there was an additional case here in San Benito County, so we have 45 cases, with three of them being active. And the new conversation at the Board of Supervisors today was all about wearing a mask. And these are cloth masks. So on Friday, the health official issued a press release that says we are considering making this mandatory. And so the question became, how do our citizens get, get a hold of a cloth mask? And we've been working on that locally, because you would wear that in the, in the event that you would be amongst the public in a grocery store, for example. And so Sheriff Taylor was on that call, was at the Board of Supers meeting, and he made a good point today. He said that if the sheriff was asked to enforce a mandatory mask order, that a business owner would simply put after, must we wear, must wear a shirt, must wear shoes, must wear a mask? So that's the way he sees it moving forward. If it is brought forward by the health official as, with administrative solution, then local code enforcement could intervene, and that would really help the sheriff. That was my interpretation of what I heard today. So on Friday, in their briefing, I reported to the council that, that, uh, that group decided not to consider relaxing any kind of shelter-in-place rules, but again, talked about wearing masks as a mandated process. So we're wearing our masks today, setting a good example for others. And today, for the first time, the county is talking about initiating their own Business Assistance Program. And I reached out to the CIO, Ray, and, and asked if, you know, we could help or, or participate in that in any way. And they may, as they develop details, be coming back to San Juan Batista with some plans and, and maybe an ask for a contribution to a program such as that. And we've already established our own. It kicked off on Monday, so I can talk to that real quick. So we brought on board this week Lizeth Sanchez-Turner. And Liz is on the line with us today. She gave me a brief bio that I'll try and summarize for you. She's been an administrative professional with over 20 years' experience in high executive support roles and organized professionals specializing in administrative support, including HR, finance, and marketing and communications. Major strengths include strong leadership, excellent communication skills, and strong convictions with an overall sense of fairness and equality. She's worked with the homeless and other nonprofit organizations, so she has a wide, wide variety of experience. She knows business practices and the private sector business point of view. And so she feels that she's specially qualified to work closely with our business owners as they will see eye to eye. And that would make her a good liaison, because that's the point, is to connect the, the mysteries of government with the, with the practical business point of view. So Liz has inherited her entrepreneurial genes from her maternal grandfather, who started his, his fortune selling lemonade. Thank you, Liz. Thank you, Liz, for adding that. Avid gardener, music art enthusiast, devoted San Juan Batista resident. So we welcome Liz to our, as our community liaison. And Liz, I don't know if you want to say anything. We're just getting started. We buried her with, with details, so that's where we're at right now. Liz, did you want to say anything?
I just wanted to say good evening to the mayor and the, uh, the council members. It's been a, a really exciting week, just started from the ground running. I mean, Don has not spared any paperwork to go in my direction. And currently, the big thing in order to get funding is to continue our FEMA coursework and getting, and doing that. So that's been a big part of it. But I've already actually had some relationships with some of the community merchants, and we have a few of them. I just found out today, Don, I didn't get a chance to tell you, that there's another applicant who did get confirmation. And so it is moving. It's just moving slightly. And I feel like if we link arms together, we'll get through this and, you know, get to see some plans of getting our downtown back, you know? So I'm excited to be here and, yeah, fun times.
That's, that's great. I'm glad to hear that, Liz. Thank you. Another thing that Liz has just barely gotten her fingers wet in is, is planning, I've got on the screen now. on the screen now, Reyes Pinoza from the county press release about a virtual town hall meeting to inform the business community of available resources and COVID-19 updates. So, that is scheduled for Friday afternoon at 3:00 PM, and they're going to have a panel, including Mark Fontes, who's been super helpful. He's the new executive director of the San Benito, the Economic Development Corporation in San Benito County. So, he's only been on board, I think I met him, Mayor, you were there, you came in and got to meet him yourself. His first day was like March 16th, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, welcome aboard, Mark Fontes. You've done a great job. You've been a great help to us. So, anyway, we're lucky to have resources like that. And if you're signed up with the NICSIL program, then you got this press release, and you're in the loop with this event moving forward on Friday. So, the mayor already talked about Hazel Hawkins Clinic. City Hall remains closed. For now, the parks remain closed. And something exciting, which is actually pretty cool, was our first Incident Action Plan weekly briefing Monday. We're able to meet in the library and with adequate space to actually talk about different things going on amongst Rich Brown, who's our operations chief, and we brought Todd Kennedy back today, or Monday, to be our planner and help us put our data together and our maps. And of course, we have Rochelle as our PIO, Deputy City Clerk was present, and Liz was present, and these are some of the ideas that our group came up with on Monday that I thought would be great to share with the community, especially to be driving carefully, because we have more pedestrians and kids on bikes than ever seems like, and this time they're all from San Juan Batista, so they're your neighbors out there. Eat from one local restaurant a week. That's a great idea. I know Doña Esters, our Japanese restaurant, Takaka.
Inaka.
Inaka, and one more, I believe, oh, JJ's Burgers, was all serving to-go food, and then...
And then the ice cream shop.
And then the ice cream shop, of course.
Thank you, Margot.
Thank you, Margot. And so, so those are just some of the ideas that came from our group that met today and things that we're following up on. So, we have a structure, we have an organization in place to respond to the emergency, to get us through the long haul. The city gained access to the FEMA grant portal on Friday, so we are set up to apply for our reimbursements as they become available. I was hoping they would become available this Thursday, but I guess not, so we're still working on that. And there are other actions that the league is taking on our behalf, so I believe that there will be funds coming to help City Hall. We just have to be patient. The new Mighty Networks app software is being promoted. We are sending postcards this week, which I shared with the council last Tuesday, and we'll be putting up some beautiful banners designed by Shipper Grower at the entrances to our city. So, there's a postcard, the reminder with all the important phone numbers on it. The Community Foundation wrote back and said, "This is a great idea. Thank you for including 211 on that notice." And so, that's pretty much our summary that I have for you tonight. We're holding our own, and again, the whole policy of shelter-in-place and hang in there, everybody, including my own family and teenagers. It's hard. It's hard, but we're making, but we're holding the line, so that's my report for tonight.
Thank you.
Wow.
Thank you so much for your hard work and how you keep up.
Well, and I didn't write a city manager summary, because it's, that's been 90% of my time is right here on the COVID program, and we've been sharing that with the community and the city council every week, so that's where we're at. Okay, the moments we've been waiting for. Are you ready? Does anybody have any questions about COVID-19? I'm happy to answer them. Council members online?
Any questions, any comments from council members? Says that?
From me.
Okay. Councilman Freeman.
So, we do not yet have an official, you must wear the mask at all times outside type of regulation?
No, not yet. I understood that the, that the health official was talking with county council about how to do that. Can you enforce it if not everybody has access to a mask? And so, there are some technical details they're trying to straighten out.
That's what I heard, too.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Councilman De Vries.
No, no comment.
Okay. Vice Mayor Jordan.
No comment. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go on. Now, we'll go on to item 6B, Urban Growth Boundary. Senior Planner David Mack, are you still there?
I am still here, yes.
Awesome, thank you, David. Okay.
Great, so let me just pull up my PowerPoint and...
Okay, you got it?
...and see if it works. I'm pretty sure it's gonna work. Everybody should see it, right?
Yes, yes, very good.
Thank you, David.
All right, here we go. So, good afternoon, Mayor Edge and city council members, we're rolling. As you know, I'm David Mack. I will be giving you a brief presentation on the Urban Growth Boundary and sphere of influence and the status of both of those in San Juan Batista. So, without getting too far, and just for the listening public, I'm going to go over some definitions, so everybody knows exactly what we're talking about. Urban Growth Boundary is a regional boundary set in an attempt to control urban sprawl, and in its simplest form, is mandating that the area inside of that boundary be used for development and the area outside be preserved in its natural state for use for agriculture. So, for San Juan Batista, that would be a boundary that you would be proposing to expand to and no further, and everything outside of that would remain in agriculture kind of as a buffer from the urban development. A sphere of influence is a territorial area where the city would have political influence or interest in, although the jurisdiction and permitting rights are held by another jurisdiction. So, in San Juan Batista's place, you could adopt a sphere of influence, that land and jurisdictional decision-making would remain with the county of San Benito, but there, it would foster cooperation between the two governing bodies or jurisdictions, even though San Juan Batista would not have formal governing power. That would remain with San Benito County. As Bill Nicholson said, sphere of influences have to be adopted by LAFCO, and they serve as a plan for probable physical boundaries and service of the local government agency as determined by the commission. So, the key point with a sphere of influence is that when you set one up or have one or amend one to expand it, the city is signifying to everybody that that is their next phase of, potential phase of annexation, and the city should be putting steps in place to provide public services, water, sewer, and other public services to those parcels within the sphere. But again, that would remain with, under the jurisdiction of the county of San Benito until it was formally announced. San Juan Batista did have an urban growth boundary prior to November 2015, sorry for that typo, I thought I fixed it, and the adoption of the 2015-2035 general plan. The first urban growth boundary in San Juan Batista was set up in 1985, and there was an amendment in 2014, which included the Christopher Ranch, Nailing Ranch property, which was done with a mitigated net deck. And I believe, I could be wrong, but I believe that is where Mayor Toshon sits now.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
Absolutely.
The 2015-2035 general plan, however, did not carry forward a formal urban growth boundary. The general plan does include numerous policies and goals related to urban growth boundaries. I've listed three of them, and I believe Emily Renzel mentioned page 1.2.3, which I could look up if needed. But the point of the slide is that there are policies and goals within the general plan that talk about urban growth boundary, but the general plan itself did not establish a new urban boundary, and it did not carry forward the previous urban growth boundary. So, San Juan Batista does not have an urban growth boundary as we speak right now. In terms of influence history, there is a map, which is map 4.2, within the 2015-2035 general plan. I think Bill Nicholson also referenced this map when he was talking about how they should be set up. This is a good example of a sphere of influence map, but unfortunately, as Bill mentioned, sphere of influences have to be run through LAFCO and adopted by LAFCO. So, although this map is within the general plan, the LAFCO process has not been completed or executed, so San Juan Batista does not have the sphere of influence in place or adopted either. Moving into what happens if San Juan Batista wants to re-adopt or re-establish urban growth boundary and/or a sphere of influence? First of all, the city would have to identify where the boundary or boundaries should be placed, because they would be different. A sphere of influence would be closer to the city limits, and then the urban growth boundary would be a little bit further out, kind of as concentric rings, but they would not be the same boundary. The city would need to coordinate with San Benito County. We would have to coordinate and cooperate with LAFCO through the process on both of They would both require a general plan amendment, more so for the urban growth boundary than perhaps the sphere of influence, and the reason for that is because there was no urban growth boundary included in the general plan, and it could require additional zoning or general plan changes. There would be potential environmental impacts to development within that. When you adopt a sphere of influence or an urban growth boundary, you have to assume that there will be some type of development there. Even though the city does not have jurisdictional decision-making on it, you do need to analyze potential for future annexation in that area. As Bill Nicholson also mentioned, the city, mainly for a sphere of influence, would need to provide rezoning of those applicable properties. We would have to do a zoning ordinance amendment potentially to densities or a number of things to include future development and/or infrastructure improvements. And again, both of those would be subject to CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, and depending on what the city wanted to do, areas included and potential impacts. At a minimum, it would require the preparation of an initial study in mitigated net deck, but honestly, it would probably involve an environmental impact report, either a new one, a supplemental impact report, or potentially tearing off of the 2015 general plan EIR. But all of that would have to be researched before that decision was made. But establishment of a sphere of influence and urban growth boundary are subject to CEQA. As I mentioned earlier, they can bring potential developmental impacts, including expansions of roads, water systems, sewer systems, and other public services. Since I presented this back to the planning commission, the city has engaged in some conversations with Bill and LAFCO, and the main takeaway from those conversations were that prior to any new annexations or the re-establishment of an urban growth boundary and/or a sphere of influence, the city should resolve a number of issues. Sorry for the cough, I am recovering from concern. Mainly to resolve the spurt issues there, I believe, and Dawn could correct me, I think the sewer capacity issues and pump stations have been resolved, but there's still a matter of salt content within the system that would need to be fixed. The city would need to, as I mentioned earlier, ensure that they could provide adequate sewer and water capacity to the properties within a sphere of influence.
For a guy, needs water.
And the city would need to ensure that the ability or the ability to contract for additional police fire and emergency service coverages, and to maintain new roadways as development occurs. And I also took, Bill mentioned this, part of that process could be renegotiating the tax sharing agreement with the county, so that the city, as we set these up and potentially annex future properties, would get a little bit more of the tax sharing to bring some money into the coffers, and if this was done, it would affect future development applications. It would also increase the ability to maintain and upgrade the sewer and water system facilities. And in conclusion, basically, as I stated earlier, San Juan Batista does not have an adopted urban growth boundary, the lack of the implementation and the lack of carrying it forward into the general plan. We do not have an adopted sphere of influence, because with the adoption of the 2015 general plan, the previous sphere of influence was kind of washed away, and the reason I say that is you can't have an adopted sphere of influence. It was based on the previous general plan when you've replaced that general plan. So, the adoption of the general plan kind of cleaned the slate, whereas nothing exists. Again, the map within the general plan was never adopted, accepted, or recorded or processed through LAFCO, so is not effective, and it's not actually on record. Again, just with re-implementation or readoption, it would require coordination with stakeholders to identify the parcels in the areas, coordination with multiple governing jurisdictions, and a secret review process. And I think the last thing I do want to add is, the city, mainly Dawn, Todd, Kennedy, and myself, were on a call with some planners from San Benito County, and although we don't have the sphere of influence adopted and processed through LAFCO, the county is still willing to send development projects that are surrounding San Juan Batista to the city for review and input. They're not just going to ignore that the city is there. They are very collaborative, and they're willing to work with the city, just like they would as if the sphere of influence did exist. But technically, our comments would just be advisory versus if the sphere was adopted, we would carry a little bit more. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I think Bill Nicholson is also still here. If you guys have specific questions for LAFCO, but otherwise, I will do my best to answer any questions you have.
I don't have anything. Do any of the other council members have questions for David?
Yeah, Dan, Dan does.
Dan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, you owe a couple. First of all, I think David needs a mask. I'm just gonna say that.
No, he needs to drink water.
I hope your cough is not a side of someone's research, David. I hope you feel better soon. I had a question about, I had a question about the SOI. So, since it was in the general plan but never submitted to LAFCO for adoption, to what extent can the city now, the community, the voters, the citizens of San Juan Batista change or alter that SOI from what was put in the general plan in 2015, and then submit that to LAFCO and have that be the official SOI? I want to say for the record, I'm not saying that the SOI is in the right place or the wrong place. I don't know if it's in the right place or not. I haven't really studied that. I'm just curious about the opportunity that may or may not exist to alter the SOI at this juncture prior to permission to LAFCO, and either you or Bill can answer that.
Sure, so I know Deb Mall is on the call for the conference as well, in case I miss anything, but because LAFCO hasn't adopted the sphere, there's no process that the city would need to amend or correct through LAFCO. The city could submit a map as is, if desired, and go through the process through LAFCO. That would not affect the general plan, because that map is in the general plan, and I would like to assume was analyzed in the general plan, in the general plan again. But I believe the map is altered, and it affects different properties depending on the zoning of those properties and the general plan designation of those properties and resources that may or may not surround them. That could trigger a total CEQA analysis, and again, that could be a mitigated net deck, that could be a negative declaration. But depending on those potential impacts, that could also trigger a supplemental, a tiered, or an EIR. It's a little pre, I would say it's a little premature to give a solid answer on that, because without knowing how that map would be adjusted, and what those properties or resources are bound to be, I would be guessing, but for example, if that map was amended and it went through a proper... and it went through a property that was within a hundred-year floodplain, there would be some consideration for potential impacts. Or if there was, you know, sand marking kit box or long drainage with, I can't think of it, a salamander.
Oh, yeah.
Red-toed salamander.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A little lizard.
There would have to be some type of CEQA analysis to change that and then update the map in the general plan and then go through the process to have it adopted and put in the plates.
So I would just add, I would add, Dan, that it would take a general plan amendment to start it. And you can do it five times a year, you can amend the general plan. So if you look at the boundary now and you feel that it isn't right, you should start the process to do a general plan amendment first and then break the rest of the components into play.
Yeah, and right. And if the map changed, it would have to be amended, as Deb said, through a general plan amendment and then reinsert it into the document.
But to the extent that the community or the council desires of implementing or reinstalling, I guess we can say, a UGB in San Juan Batista, that for sure would require a general plan amendment anyway. So as long as we're doing a general plan amendment, if the planning commission or the council or the community thought that the sphere of influence that was originally set forth in 2015 wasn't exactly right, but instead should be altered in some way, that could be included in the same general plan amendment, correct?
Yes, and I would recommend that you do those together.
Right.
You've done several.
And then you're born.
Sorry, if you did those separately, you would take up two of your five general plan amendment options, and you'd have to do some of those.
Right. And if you're making the general plan, you might as well just do it all in one fell swoop. And if you're putting David on the environmental, the environmental document, is that the previous EIR that was done to support the 2015 general plan would also have to support any alteration to the SOI? And if it didn't, then it'd have to be amended to the general plan or to tear off of it and so forth, right? Or do we look at a new environmental document altogether that would be standalone to the general plan EIR?
Yeah, I mean, that would be, that would be the worst-case scenario. Like, the information and the analysis in the general plan EIR would have to support the UGBs.
You just want to do the general plan EIR. I mean, you try to make it a document so it's a, so you can tear off of it and make changes later on. So we'd have to go back and look at that EIR. So, you know, this was, that was all done by the students at Cal Poly. You know, kind of as a break.
The EIR was?
Yes.
Yeah, the EIR and the general plan were all done. We hired Matt, too, who came over and started working as the planner. And I think we're in the middle of doing the rezoning as a part of this. And I guess it just didn't get finished. You bring in the sewer boundary.
Oh, I didn't know that the Cal Poly students did the EIR also. Okay, well, that makes a lot of sense. And the only thing I wanted to say to the council, to the public, is that San Juan Batista did have urban growth boundaries that worked really well for years and years until 2015, when the new general plan was implemented. And as David said, it did not include or did not carry forward any kind of urban growth re-protection for the city. So that's one thing that I've been talking about for a while.
Yeah, Bill, I think I could add, and this came from a conversation I had with Bill Nicholson, because I see he's not on here anymore. And he mentioned in his presentation, technically, you know, the county could propose development and approve development surrounding the city. But they would have to have water and sewer capabilities or septic out there. And I think for the county, that's already an issue. And I think during his presentation, that's why he touched on it, where the city could offer. But we could, the city could also say, we're not going to extend water and sewer and maybe what kills those developments unless they can tap into the sewer system or get the health department to sign off on a large septic system, which for a lot of houses would not be approved in California. And the same thing with wells, right? If you're going to do a large residential commercial development in the county, you're probably not going to do it on wells and septic. You're going to get water. So there are mechanisms that are still in place that do protect the city and the absence of the urban growth boundary. But the urban boundary is kind of more of the formal protection, we'll say.
Hey, David, is still on the phone?
No.
They just got dropped off the computer, sorry.
And Bill, to Bill and David, I want to just get your thoughts on this. You're probably aware of the initiative that's been submitted to the city of Hollister to install an urban growth boundary in Hollister. And that initiative curiously sets the new UGB right on the city's sphere of influence. So if they're wanting to say, and I wonder, if either one of you had any thoughts on doing that, having a UGB be synonymous with the sphere?
Let me, if I may, Bill Nicholson chimed in. Yeah, my computer battery went dead, that's why. But there's one correction to what David said. You have a sphere of influence. Is it a product of LAFCO? Is your sphere, you initiate it with your general plan or before LAFCO could come up with their own if they felt like it? But it's really, it's a LAFCO designation. So whether your general plan is inadequate or it's been updated, the sphere that was in place was set by LAFCO. And that rectangular sphere that I showed during my presentation, that green boundary, is way beyond your current general plan area. So you have a sphere, and it's huge. And there's no way you're able to provide urban services within that boundary. So it's outdated based on your general plan, but it is in effect. So if the initiative was going to choose a sphere of influence line instead of an urban growth boundary, that is, I would call it sprawl. That is everything against what the pork group is trying to promote, I think. That sphere is huge, and it is in place today. So I just, I just wanted to confirm that. And the important thing about spheres are, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Well, I was gonna say, Bill, that to date, so you're saying that there is a sphere of influence that's in place, as far as LAFCO is concerned, for the city of San Juan Batista? It's just a very old one. And I take it, you're saying that it's older than the 2015 general plan. This sphere goes back a long ways then, right?
Yeah, it does.
Yeah.
Do you have a date on that?
No, I don't know when it was first adopted. It's in the file that I have for LAFCO. It's the sphere, the oldest one in there. There may be an older sphere that I don't have a file, that I have not filed for. But it's probably, or it's probably tied to your, is it 1996 general plan?
Ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight, yes. It's at least that old, it's not older than that.
Okay. So either way, LAFCO's, the sphere of influence that LAFCO has on file for the city is outdated. And now the question is whether we use the sphere that was identified in the 2015 general plan or whether this council and these citizens in 2020 think that that could be improved upon. And if they do, then that's something that could be amended or changed in conjunction with the general plan amendment. That might also, with the will of the people in the council, that might also include a just urban growth boundary. Did I say that correctly?
I would say so, still. That's, I have to be ready.
Okay. Okay, so Madam Mayor, I have a couple of philosophical comments about the propriety of the UGB, but I can say those till the end.
Okay, all right. So does anybody else have any other questions, comments?
I have one. This is a follow-up to Dan's question. So if there is a SOI present and it has not been reported with LAFCO, which is what I understand, would it benefit us to report it as a, is there a lot of cost involved with that? Or is it just a miniscule treaty?
There is a cost for it. I don't have on the top of my head of what that cost is. We're talking about, you know, maybe $2,000 or $3,000. There is a sphere in place, and it's that green boundary, and again, my book. Don has the PowerPoint. I don't know how you people can bring that slide back up. It's a large rectangle, way outside the state limit. Your southern boundary up in the mountainside is, or southern and western boundary is more or less similar in your new general plan. But on the east side of the prime ag land, that your new sphere ate pipe to your urban designated area. All your urban land uses in your new general plan are co-terminants with the proposed sphere in the new general plan. The old sphere that's still in effect, both way out into the prime ag land, you don't have any urban destinations, you don't have any destinations at all out there. So if anything were to happen in that sphere right now, either you need to amend the general plan and promote something or San Benito County would need to amend their general plan and promote something. Otherwise, it's just agricultural. And it really shouldn't be in your sphere then because your sphere is your service area. You're not, right now you have no plan for services out in that area. And maybe to an update you would. But what you could submit to LAFCO now, without much to be, to be against, and that's great. And you already have an EIR on site, is the sphere that's in your general plan. So that would be something you could do. And I just have to say honestly, it was, it was told repeatedly to your former city, or not your former, your city manager that was in charge at the time of this general plan. The communications in the file were that when you're done with this, bring your sphere to LAFCO. And after the general plan was adopted, it was okay to submit your sphere, and it just never happened.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Okay, well, thank you very much, David.
I do have a question of the council, and maybe we want to hear the council's comments first. But as we put this together, and thank you, David, for all your hard work on this, we really appreciate it. We may want to consider a capital improvement project July 1 that would initiate a general plan amendment. It's probably going to be an expensive endeavor, so we would need to get some prices and put that together for our budget consideration. And I don't know how the rest of the council feels about that, but that's just an idea that I would throw.
I agree. I agree.
Do you have a public comment that was submitted on this item?
Okay.
Dear city council members, please, please make the adoption of an urban growth boundary your immediate and highest priority. I, as well as others, were shocked to learn that we no longer have a urban growth boundary, apparently deleted by the 2015, 2035 general plan amendment. It is further very upsetting to learn that the Rancho Vista project is outside of our former urban growth boundary, which required annexation to the city with the subsequent loss of the Christopher Ranch lands as a green belt buffer. Although expensive, opening up the general plan is probably a very good idea. This will give us an opportunity to correct so many other mistakes in the plan that was developed by the San Luis Obispo students. At the planning commission meeting, Mr. Mack indicated that adopting an urban growth boundary by initiative would not save the city money because an EIR and general plan amendments would have to be made in any event. It is further suggested that San Benito County zoning of surrounding sphere of influence ranchlands, Nyland and Manning, at five-acre parcels should also be immediately amended by San Juan Batista to 40-acre parcels, but allow clustering of housing allocations already given by the county. Thank you for considering my comments, Cara Vonck.
Thank you.
Are there other members of the public that want to say?
Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment or question? Okay, all right. That will go on. And going back to your suggestion, city manager Reynolds, I agree. I think that we should start somewhere and get this going as soon as possible.
And Dan had some other things he wanted to add?
Dan, did you want to have, you were going to add something at the end?
Yes, yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just, I wanted to add philosophically that I agree with Cara and others that protection, this is the right kind of statement or philosophy about San Juan Batista and our identity. I think protection of that identity is of our, should be our foremost concern. And if you question people, take surveys of the community and so forth, they'll say that one thing that makes San Juan Batista so unique is it is surrounded by beautiful ag land. Ag land, that's our asset, to our row crops and our cattle grazing and the beautiful hillsides and so forth. We're a Pacific Grove or a cardinal with an ocean. But we do have this beautiful ag land that surrounds us. And if we lose that, then we become generally, then we've lost a huge measure, I think, of our identity. So I believe strongly in protecting that with boundaries that say where development, residential development can go and where cannot. And the footnote I wanted to make is that the previous urban growth boundary that the city had, I was involved with the city at that time when it was placed. And that urban growth boundary allowed San Juan Batista to grow to a population of 5,000 residents. So it still, an urban growth boundary will allow growth. It just protects areas where you don't want growth to occur. In the sense that I would submit that that would be some of our prime projects to be. And the only other comment I wanted to make was, in addition to Don taking steps to budget the work that would need to be done, query whether we could, as a council, direct at the planning commission, start analyzing questions or answering questions such as, is the current sphere of influence line that's articulated in the 2015 San Juan Batista general plan, is that sphere, is the sphere in the right place? Before we send that sphere to LAFCO to be adopted, seems to me we should make sure that we're happy with where it is. And I'm not saying I'm unhappy with where it is. I don't know. But I think that before, like I said, before it's adopted, we should be able to answer that question confidently. Yeah, that sphere of influence is perfect. Let's just send it to Bill Nicholson. He'll deal with it and it should be done to get it adopted. And then secondly, I think that the planning commission should start with the work of discussions regarding where an urban growth boundary might be. Maybe that's something that has to wait until consultants brought on board or something else. I don't know. But it seems that we might be able to double-track this a little bit, Don, and get some questions or meetings going with the planning commission while we're doing the budget. What do you think of that?
I think that's a great idea. I agree. So let's just get going on it.
As soon as the planning commission meets again, under current circumstances.
Oh, that's right.
Under current circumstances, so, yeah, it is. And a lot of our planning services are as well, so.
Okay, great. All right.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, so now, John, did you have a comment, question?
Yes, I have some comments. Yeah, I agree that we need an urban growth boundary and an SOI, and I'm really all in favor of it. But there's something holding me back, and that's the crisis we're going through right now in the state budget and our budget. We don't know what that is. I think what we have to do is even tie into, or as Deborah said, tear off the EIR and do an additional EIR. That's going to be a pretty expensive project, and we have a lot on our plate right now. Before considering any changes at all, we're going to have to solve some of our water problems. And that's going to be key, by the way. Before we just say, oh, yeah, 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 we've got to do it, we need to think about all of the issues in total. We need to take a 30,000-foot look at everything, and hopefully we can get it done.
Okay, thank you. All right. Another comment? Okay, all right, thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I could just provide one response to Councilman, my good friend, Councilman Refrainen. It's that, John, we have to get a sphere of influence.
It's that, John, we have to get a sphere of influence adopted by LAFCO. It can't be that old antiquated one that Bill was referring to. That thing's awful. I'm not even sure what year that was adopted by LAFCO. I think it was a long time ago. So my only point is that before we just go off and add the sphere of influence that is in the 2015 general plan adopted, should we make sure we're happy with where it is located? That seems like something we have to do regardless.
Yeah, I agree completely. And that's why I asked the question to Bill, you know, kind of how much does this cost? And, you know, and how long does it take? Those type of really somewhat technical questions because I think we just need to have an idea. From what I heard from him, is 3,000 bucks is really not a lot of money in the big scheme of things. And, yeah, I agree, once we figure out what we want to do with it, we should move ahead.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Dan. Thank you, John.
Sure.
We're going to go on now. We're going to move on to item 6C, water and wastewater update. City Manager Reynolds?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. You know, I was thinking back, I wrote the original report, hello, probably around March 10th. And at that time, water was taking up most of my attention. So I'm so happy that we brought Carl Bajarki on board and he's been working with our master plans. And as you'll see back in the original report, I'm describing a lot of communication between ourselves and the water board and the EPA and how we came to the situation we're in now. We have spent a lot of money on freshwater out at well 6, developing well 6 and well 5, only to find recently that well 6 has a growing concentration of nitrates. We're currently operating without well 6 at all. And we're under a direction from the water board to come to them with a blended water permit so that well 5 is the controlling source of water to back up well 1. That's what we're doing now and it's going successfully. In other words, the filtration plant that we invested in is running great and we're able to process clean water and healthy water for our community and we have ample backup. So the investment of the $11 million in bond money and then the budget overrun, all of that towards freshwater is working with the exception of well 6 and the nitrates. So we are still in a search for a new water source because we need to replace well 6 eventually. And that's where we are with the fresh water coming into our system. On the backside, on the wastewater treatment plant, we have spent more than $600,000 in the last year and a half addressing many of the issues in the condition of failure report, removing sludge and other things. And the most recent report from our operator Cypress Water is that the only problem we have now with our discharged water is salt. So we've, as someone stated to me today, we've attached enough duct tape and Band-Aids to our water treatment plant to get it to where the only concern there is salt. But that only concern has been lingering for decades. And that's where the members of the EPA and the water board had pretty much lost their patience when we met with them February 25th. It was an interesting conversation and Deb Mullin and I spoke with Senator Caballero's office about help with the state water board and Deb can speak to that if she likes. We were looking towards perhaps a closed session meeting to discuss our options. We were no longer determined to be eligible as a disadvantaged community. So that's changed in the past week, past month with 1.3 million unemployment applications at the state currently. So there was the unemployment level that had been reduced to like 3.4% that took us out of that disadvantaged community status. So with that, we have Carl on board and I've provided some updates since March 17th. First and foremost, one of the most exciting things that I'm looking forward to seeing more of is a grant application we've initiated with the USDA. Funding the solution to the salts at the wastewater treatment plant, there's a number of varieties here that we're looking at and Carl can touch bases on those. But also, it's going to take a combination of funding sources. So if we get a grant here and a grant there and a contribution from the San Benito Water District, from our property tax dollars that we've been contributing to them to preserve the groundwater, just a variety of different things that are going to have to come together to pay for an ultimate solution. But as Bill Nichols points out, it's hard to add new clients to our wastewater system as long as we continue to put salt into the creek. So with that, Carl, could you just give us a quick summary on the status of our master plan so the council knows the good work you're doing?
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. My name is Carl Bajarki and I've been brought on as a part-time employee to help put together these master plans. We kicked this off in October and we hired an engineering firm, Tom Kelly and Jerry to deliver that plan for us. Right now, we're about 50% complete with the plan. And what happens in the first half of the plan is it's a collection of all the data we learned about our pipes and manholes and pumps and lift stations and all that. And so then we're compiling that. And the second half of the plan will involve implementing specific and specialized models that helps determine what our needs are going to be in the future. And so we're about 50% through with the plan, which is where we expected to be. We're, one of the focuses of the plan is to help the city find some better water quality sources. And we've looked, we're looking closely at the West Hills Treatment Plant over Hollister. We've had some good conversations with Jeff Catano over at the San Benito Water District. And we're also, so that's one possible source for bringing good water into the city, which will alleviate ultimately the problems we're having with the sewage treatment plant. We're also, I just got a report today regarding the pellet plant. The council may be aware of a pellet plant that's been, was purchased over about a dozen years ago or more and maybe a little, it's about 10 years ago. And so I've got a report on that. What we're going to be looking at is what's it going to take to put that in operation if we wanted to make that our method of cleaning up the water source? So it's, I think it's going on schedule right now and we are evaluating some water sources to be imported as well as the pellet plant. And I think if I have anything else to say right now.
And on the sewer master plan, we've looked at options including pumping our sewage to a regional plant in Hollister and whether or not our water would be clean enough to do that with, whether or not the salt content. Could you speak a little bit to the sewer options?
Yeah, so we're going to look at a couple of things. One of them, we really need to know what is it we could do at our sewer plant itself? Let's say we decided we're just going to fix our plant, what's it going to take to remove the salts at the plant? That will be an option. I don't have any findings for that. I can tell you that will be a very expensive option. The other one, as Don mentioned, is there is capacity in Hollister at their new treatment plant. And so the project would involve placing a pipeline from our system, our collection system in town and pushing it out to the treatment plant in Hollister. And then that gets us out of the treatment business and all the regulations to go with that.
So it's really the creek is our biggest issue. If we can keep our fluent out of the creek, the EPA would go away. So, okay, with that, it's late and we're happy to answer any questions at the council. I'm sure they have questions. Thank you, Carl.
Thank you, Carl. Okay, Councilman Flores, do you have any questions?
No, no comments.
Okay, Councilman Freeman?
I just, thank you for doing this. I appreciate that. Even though I was in the water industry for over 30 years and I know what it takes to get salt out of the sewer plant. And you're right, it's very, very, very expensive. Our water is mostly, that is what we're around. And so that's the only method that I know of completely salt from a waste stream. But thank you for doing this and I'm sure when we get to closed session, we need a few cost figures to figure things out. It's going to be a huge issue and that's what we're waiting on.
Okay, thank you, John. Councilman DeVries, do you have any comments, questions?
No, no comments or questions at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments, questions from the public?
I wonder if Deb wanted to say anything.
This is Cara, Cara Vonck, and I'm just wondering about the pellet plant. Would that solve the salt issue if we got that operational? Just, you know.
Don, do you want to take that?
Sure, Carl, sure.
Yeah, the pellet plant is essentially a large water softener. It is designed to take the hard water that comes out of our wells and remove the hardness. And so then what would be delivered to our residents and our customers would be soft water. And so that is potentially an option. I mean, that was, it was an analysis done back when we purchased the pellet plant and it was found that that was probably the most cost-effective option. It's been sitting around, so now we need to evaluate what it's going to take to get it online. But yes, it potentially could take care of the water hardness problems.
Okay, thank you. Did you have a question?
No.
Were you going to?
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
I have lots.
Yeah, Leslie would have a lot of questions.
I do. Too numerous. We're good for now.
Okay, we're good for now.
All right. So shall we go on?
Yeah, so with that, yeah, we look forward to seeing the reports. There's been some good analysis. We'll continue to pursue funding and when the time is right, we'll, I did send Anna, the letter for Anna Caballero, I did copy Assembly Member Rivas's office on that, so when the time is right, we'll talk to them. Deb, is there anything you wanted to add to the conversation? Did we want to try and set a date for closed session?
We should set a date for closed session. I think a lot of this is more appropriate for closed session.
So should that be next Tuesday, Mayor, or what's your preference?
After a special meeting?
After a brief Corona update and then closed session?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay. And we could start sooner in the afternoon if you like. We don't have to wait until...
So that would be the 28th? What time?
Six, five, four or five?
Four o'clock?
Four o'clock?
It's four o'clock, okay?
Four o'clock, okay with everybody?
Yes.
Yes. We're fine with me.
Okay. All right. So we'll meet at four and then we'll have our special COVID-19 meeting at six.
Great, okay.
What day?
Tuesday, the 28th.
The 28th.
One week from today, Seidner.
Thanks, John. It'll be our sixth one in a row.
Okay, all right. So we've got that. So now, any comments from the city council? Sessa, any comments?
No, no comments.
Mr. DeVries?
No comment.
Mr. Freeman?
No comment.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yeah, I just want to say I appreciate all that our city manager and city staff are doing and to thank all of our first-line responders. And thank you for, to our community for hanging in.
Okay, very good.
Stay safe.
Stay safe, everybody, yes. City manager.
I'd like to make a motion.
That's good.
Okay, all right. Our city attorney didn't have any comment?
No.
I just apologize if this guy and my other dog disrupted your meeting. Not at their pardon.
No, no, we're good, Deb. Thank you.
Okay, so a motion has been made to adjourn the meeting? Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Meeting adjourned. No, I know.
Thank you, everybody.